People of color have had much higher rates of infection and deaths than whites. As you may know, the Northampton Board of Health adopted its own resolution on racism as a public health crisis two weeks ago. I would like to thank councilors Alex Jarrett and Michael Quinlan for proposing amendments that strengthen the original resolution. Please approve and adopt this resolution tonight. It will help redress some of the pervasive systemic racism in this country. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have James Lowenthal.
Yes. Good evening. I'm James Lowenthal, and I live at 181 Crescent Street in Northampton. I helped write Resolution 20.112 in support of the statewide dark sky bills that you will consider tonight. Consider the resolution tonight, and I hope very much that you'll vote in favor of the resolution. Thanks to councilors Karen Foster, Alex Jarrett, and Rachel Maori for bringing the resolution forward. The twin dark sky bills, S1937 and its house twin, are the result of years of ongoing collaborative work among many stakeholders. If signed into law, these state bills would implement several common sense improvements. For example, state and municipally funded light projects, that's mostly streetlights and only new ones, not existing ones. Those projects would need to be, the lighting projects would need to be fully shielded against glare. So the light goes down only, not out or up. And they would also have to be no bluer than 3,000 K. The streetlights, for example, that we have in Northampton are just right at that, at that edge of 3,000 K. Blue light is worse for light pollution and human health and wildlife. Further, Mass Department of Transportation would need to show that lights are actually needed for safety before they're installed. And the State Department of Public Utilities would change its electricity rate structure for cities and towns so that cities and towns will not be charged anymore for electricity they're not actually using. These bills have broad support. Twenty-six legislators across the state, including both Senator Joe Comerford and Representative Lindsay Sabadosa, Mass Audubon Appalachian Mountain Club and Sierra, and Sierra Club Massachusetts, and the Massachusetts Municipal Association, which has endorsed principles essentially identical to the ones in the bill. These bills will save cities and towns money. They'll protect human health and wildlife, such as the pollinating insects that we're trying to help with pollinator gardens like the one in Pulaski Park. And they'll protect the view of the stars and the Milky Way for future generations of Massachusetts residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Joanna Graham.
Hello, my name is Joanna Graham, and I live in Northampton. I'm a senior scientist at the National Audubon Society, and I'm a fervent supporter of the reduction of polystyrene and sustainability ordinance because I believe reducing demand for plastics is the only path toward mitigating the impacts of plastics on human environmental and environmental health. I would like to use this time to briefly highlight some of the impacts of plastics on birds. Scientists estimate that by the year 2050, 99% of all seabirds will have consumed plastic at some point in their lives. Because if you're a seabird, plastic actually smells like food. Phytoplankton produce a chemical called dimethyl sulfide, or DMS. And some species use its odor as a way to locate potential meals. As plastic debris spends time floating in the ocean, its surface may be colonized by DMS-producing algae and bacteria. Over time, the biofilm living on the plastic may produce enough of the chemical to confuse foraging birds. But the problem isn't just confined to the sea. There's a growing, there's growing evidence that ocean debris is also a major concern for coastal birds. Many shorebird species have been found with microplastics in their guts, likely because they mimic the colors of their prey. Further, plastics routinely find their ways, their way into nests, and this is especially common with ospreys. Plastic items mimic the appearance of many of their natural nest building supplies and can choke or smother the birds. More plastic trash is being produced and improperly disposed of around the world today than ever before. About 8.3 billion metric tons of virgin plastic has been produced since the 1950s. Out of that, 6.3 billion metric tons went unrecycled, most ending up in landfills. About 8 million metric tons find their way to the ocean each year due to littering, illegal dumping, and poor waste management. Much of that refuse piles up in gyres, but microplastics can wash onto shore where they imperil a whole different ecosystem. The best way to prevent microplastics is to keep them out of the water in the first place. Banning non-recyclable plastic items is a good start. I urge you to make Northampton part of the solution and support a plastics ban in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Irving Sobelmann.
Thank you. So my name is Irving Sobelmann, and I live in Laurel Park in Northampton. I am also a member of the Steering Committee of Climate Action Now. And I'm here to speak in support of the Plastic Reduction and Sustainability Ordinance introduced by city councilors Bill Dwight and Rachel Maori and the Northampton Youth Commission. And I really want to call out the Northampton Youth Commission. It has been such a valuable voice in our community, and I commend their members' tireless work to better our city and to protect their own futures. If passed, this ordinance would ban the use, sale, and distribution of most single-use food, service, wear, and packaging. And it's an important step towards greater sustainability, healthier communities, less waste, and a lower carbon footprint for Northampton. As the climate emergency continues at its alarming rate, this is a common sense approach that many municipalities across Massachusetts and around the country have taken. I was heartened to see provisions in the ordinance to create exemptions for healthcare facilities and for retail businesses who may find the ban to pose a significant hardship for them. I believe that given the current climate emergency, we may sometimes feel inconvenienced as we make changes in our business's usual practices that have themselves brought about this dire impasse. But at the same time, we know we are dealing with the pandemic, and it has left so many individuals and businesses in a precarious financial position. Somehow, we need to figure out ways to address both these issues at once. This proposed ordinance offers you an opportunity to show that you are up to the task. I hope that the council will vote in favor of the ordinance and keep Northampton moving forward and doing its part in promoting a livable future for our children and for all children. Thank you.
Next is John Bidwell.
Hi, I'm John Bidwell, Florence, Massachusetts. I'm also the executive, executive director of the United Way of Hampshire County, and I am giving testimony in support of the resolution recognizing the importance of the 2020 census as we head into the last month of this. Just want to give a quick reminder as to why the census is important. It brings political clout. It is only through the recognition of understanding how many people are in our area and having an accurate census count that we get accurate representation. This is very, very important. It also contributes to our economic development. It is by understanding how many people that we have that we receive the full amount of support from the state that is due to us. And it also monitors and enforces civil rights statutes. Census data, as we must be reminded, is used to monitor and enforce compliance with civil rights statutes, including the National Voters Rights Act of 1965. Our communities, in addition to this, deserve to be seen, and everybody who is in our community deserves to be recognized. At United Way, we see this every day. We support 30 agencies across Hampshire County, and all of them are dependent on money that comes from the state and different grants. And that money is optimized when we have a true count of the number of people who actually live in our communities. We know that they rely on this, and it's very, very important in terms of the work that they do, especially for the neediest in our community. We also need to act quickly on this resolution. As many of you know, the census was supposed to be wrapped up at the end of October. It is not being wrapped up at the end of October, but indeed at the end of September. That doesn't give us much time. We hope that not only is this resolution passed, but we act on it quickly, and we don't spend too much time talking about it. It is really important that we also reach out in these last few weeks to the hard-to-reach populations. That's the elderly, those are migrants in the area, and people who live in remote areas and who are homeless. I want to make sure that we thank you very much for your support in all of this going forward. And we truly support that you give, that you give the full support to the census resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next is Martha Nathan.
Mute.
You got it. I can hear you, Marty.
There we go. Okay. My name is Marty Nathan. I live at 24 Massasoit Street in Northampton. And I am here as an individual and also representing Two Degrees and Climate Action Now. And, but I'm speaking as a physician. And in that manner, I would like to speak to the direct human health impacts of polystyrene. The major toxins in both foam and hard polystyrene are styrene and benzene, both known carcinogens and neurotoxins that are hazardous to humans. Both are stored in the fat, in fat in the body, and both have negative health effects from long-term exposure. Styrene can cause central nervous system and kidney effects, hearing loss, balance and concentration problems, cancer, as well as headaches, depression, and fatigue and weakness. According to the US EPA, 100% of Americans have styrene in their body. The major effect of long-term exposure to benzene is on the blood. It has harmful effects on bone marrow, produces anemia, excessive bleeding, and is harmful to the immune system, increasing the chance for infection. It is a positive for leukemia. Studies have proved that styrene and benzene each leach continuously from polystyrene bottles sitting on the shelf. Polystyrene food containers leach the toxin styrene particularly when they come into contact with warm food or drink, alcohol, oils, and acidic foods, causing human contamination and posing a health risk. So tea with lemon, coffee with dairy cream, fruit juices, alcoholic beverages, and wine should never be drunk from styrofoam cups, nor should oily foods be eaten from styrofoam containers. Because of their heat instability leading to toxic leaching, experts warn against ever-microwaving food in plastic or styrofoam food containers. But we don't have to use plastic food packaging directly to be exposed to polystyrene's negative health effects. Its fragmentation into microplastics creates a form that can directly enter our body from the water we drink, the food grown in soil contaminated by it, and meat, and particularly seafood that we eat. Those microplastics can cause inflammation and cellular damage linked to cardiovascular disease, cancer, and autoimmune disorders. And wherever it lands, it continues to leach poisons that can do further harm. Burning polystyrene, either in our backyard or Bondi's Island, likewise releases an even broader array of toxic substances, including heavy metals such as lead and mercury, acid gases. Do you need me?
That was the time, Marty.
What?
Thank you. That was, that was three minutes. Could you wrap up your sentence, please? Thank you.
This is what faces us regionally, the health threats. But think about the children of Cancer Alley and indigenous children around fracking sites who face the worst and most harmful effects of the creation of polystyrene. It is for all these reasons that I ask the city council, please, to pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next is Sharon Molten.
Hi, my name is Sharon Molten. I live in Ward 7B. And I'll be really brief because I see there are a lot of people, and there's been really great testimony about Resolution 20.113. I'm totally in favor of that for as long as I could remember. When I want to take out food, I would go to a restaurant, get the food on plates, bring reusable glass containers from home myself. Um, and, and now that you can't use your own containers, um, I haven't been able to, to use restaurants. So if I knew that, that they were going to be using compostable material, you know, I would be able to use them again. I also just want to say that I'm in favor of Resolution 20.107 and thank the councilors for having that. And I'm also in favor of 20.112. We heard about the importance of controlling too much lighting. So thank you very much, and I'm very happy with my councilors and the other councilors.
Thank you, Sharon. Um, so next is a, is the phone number ending in 7081. I'm gonna see if we, we had some trouble with phones the other day, but I'm going to ask to unmute you. And star six, right, to unmute? So to unmute, hit star six. And that should unmute your phone, even if, even though you're not on the computer. Okay, I'm so sorry. I don't know why this is not working. Um, I'm going to go on to the next person. If you manage to get unmuted, I'm, I will keep an eye on it. And if you could just wait till the next, the person who's going to go next finishes, then I'll let you go next, okay? But just keep trying. So star six on your phone keypad should unmute you. I'm going to go to Mila, please. Mila?
Hi, yes, thank you very much. I'm Mila Kabat-Zinn. I live at 32 Ward Avenue. And I'm just so touched by all of the fantastic resolutions and, and things that you're voting on tonight. You know, I'm, I'm here to speak on Resolution 20112 and on curbing light pollution and to support the statewide act to improve outdoor lighting and reduce, and, and also to improve dark sky visibility. I really appreciate the councilors who have introduced this as, as for the town to support. You know, there are so many environmental issues that are absolutely incredibly serious. Some of them we can actually affect on a local level. And so I'm very happy to see an attempt to reduce the use of, of plastics in the town. But this also is something that as a town, we actually can affect. The, the 30, for, for, for more than 30 years, I lived in Lexington, Mass, and worked on outdoor lighting issues and tried to work, try to curb light pollution. And, and over those 30 years, there've been study after study after study showing the impact, the negative impact on human health of too much excessive lighting at night, and also, of course, on wildlife, and as somebody, as James said, on pollinators. And so it's something that we actually can affect in our town. Unlike some, some environment, environmental issues are extremely difficult to affect. Some of them we can, and this is one of them. So by, by having the state support lighting that is shielded and is not reducing towns being overly lit and using lighting that is too cold, which also affects human health. These are very simple things that can be done and that we can do in, in Northampton with new lighting to really improve the quality of our nighttime environment and preserve the beauty of the night sky in addition, which is just so precious to all of us. And, and when we lose it, it's going to be, I mean, we're losing it slowly over time, and we do not want to lose it completely. So I really am happy that councillor Foster, Jarrett, and now Laura have introduced this resolution in support of the statewide bill. And I'm here thanking you for, for doing that.
Thank you very much. Um, Laura, can you try unmuting that phone number? Maybe just, maybe teamwork will get it done. Sorry, Laura, you're muted.
Hi.
Yeah. All right. Um, all right. Well, we're going to keep, keep trying to get you unmuted, 7081. We're going to move on to Eli Marlin, please.
Good evening. My name is Eli Marlin. I live at 33 Ward Ave, Northampton. I'm here tonight as the vice chair of the Northampton Youth Commission to speak in support of the Plastic Reduction and Sustainability Ordinance. When considering this ordinance, it is important to understand that over the past 70 years, over 7,500 times the weight of the Empire State Building's worth of plastic has been produced worldwide, and every person eats about 100 bits of microplastics each meal. I'm here to talk about something just as important, the financial aspect of banning plastic for businesses. We all recognize that COVID-19 pandemic has been extremely difficult for everyone, and especially small businesses. However, we hope that the additional cost will not be prohibitively challenging. While polystyrene alternative products are more expensive than their plastic counterparts, many businesses have already taken steps to reduce their polystyrene footprint. Alternatives can be found for almost every polystyrene product, and we have been very deliberate to exempt products that do not have feasible alternatives. This, along with an effective start date almost a year away, we believe will give businesses sufficient time and resources to prepare. The proposed ordinance also allows the mayor to exempt certain products or businesses who may be experiencing exceptional hardships. We know many businesses are suffering right now, and we've done everything we can to accommodate them. However, we also need to understand the importance and urgency of making Northampton more sustainable. We are facing an unprecedented climate emergency. Northampton is committed to being carbon neutral by 2050, and to meet that goal, this ordinance must be passed immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jeff Napolitano.
My name is Jeff Napolitano. I'm at 26 Berks Pitt Road in Northampton. I was just going to be here to voice my support for the resolution regarding the census, but I'm happy to hear of and articulate, hear articulated all the other good work that people who have spoke before me. So I want to voice my support for recognizing the importance of the 2020 census, the resolution that you are going to be voting on, and I urge you to pass it. During normal times, it would hardly be necessary to stress the importance of this basic constitutional process. But as I think we are all painfully aware, we're not in normal times. So whatever can be done to support the vital and now somehow controversial process of taking the census should be supported, and I urge you to pass it today. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Javier Lingo Garrido, please.
Oh, thank you so much. Javier Lingo Garrido, 27, Northern Ave, Northampton, Ward 3. I'm a staff member of the ACLU Massachusetts. I'm here to speak on behalf and encouraging the city council to pass the resolution in favor of the census. I'm grateful of councillors Sarah and Jarrett for presenting this resolution. As John Bidwell, Jeff Napolitano talk about, in different times, this would not be necessary to, to do. We are not in, in regular times. Time after time, minorities are being targeted. And right now, minorities are one of the groups that are considered hard-to-count communities. And being those groups, hard-to-count communities, jeopardizes the allocation of resources and also the, the allocation of representation in Washington. I would encourage you to pass this resolution. In different times, would not be necessary. This is really necessary. This is also in the same line of the Welcome City Ordinance. We need everybody counted. The federal government constantly and daily is threatening non-citizens, undocumented folks, threatening them, making them insecure, making, making them unsafe, and pushing them to the shadows to not, to participate in this process. We need to step forward, encourage everybody to participate, and make sure that people are going to be safe. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Javier, you win for most professional Zoom setup of the night so far. Very impressive. Okay, next up is Noah Cassis.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. My name is Noah Cassis. I'm 17 years old. I live in Ward 1. And I'm here tonight as the chair of the Northampton Youth Commission to speak about the Plastic Reduction and Sustainability Ordinance, an urgent and overdue step towards sustainability, carbon reduction, and climate mitigation in the city of Northampton. A team of the youth commission with the support and guidance of local activists and two city councilors has spent the last year crafting this ordinance that's going to be introduced tonight. And we've researched, debated, communicated with local climate activist organizations, sustainability experts, businesses, and medical facilities. And our result is an ordinance that we've strived to, to balance the urgency of the climate crisis and wastewater crisis with the increased hardship we understand our business community is experiencing as a result of COVID-19. The youth commission has communicated with our city government, both this body and the Energy and Sustainability Commission many times on this issue, but I feel the need to remind you all that we are barreling towards catastrophic climate change at full speed, and no level of our government, while we appreciate the, we appreciate, no, no level of our government is, has responded appropriately yet. Young people will bear the heaviest load, and responsible government has to listen to our call. This step, passing this ordinance, these type of restrictions, has been taken by dozens of Massachusetts municipalities and major cities around the country. And it's a first and, and small step that we can take to meet the scope of this crisis over the next decade when we know we have to act. So I hope that you will support the passage of this ordinance. And I also hope that, that all these conversations and concerns that are being raised will strengthen it and make sure that we're passing something that meets the urgency of the crisis and supports our business community. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Ezekiel Basken.
Hi, I'm, I'm in favor of all of the resolutions that are on the table tonight. But I wanted to speak about a couple of things. Firstly, I wanted to speak about the amendments that councillor Jarrett and councillor Quinlan proposed to the resolution around systemic racism as a public health crisis. I think both of those amendments are really strong additions that further solidify and sort of concretize the goals of that resolution. So I hope that you pass both of those amendments. I think they add a lot. And I, yeah. And I also wanted to speak on the Plastic Reduction and Sustainability Ordinance. I think that it's absolutely urgent and necessary. I'm concerned that it doesn't go into effect quickly enough. The, as sort of pointed out in the COVID crisis, there isn't going to be as much outdoor seating, obviously, in the winter, which means probably a really increased amount of takeout sales over this next winter season. And I'm worried about all the plastic that is going to be used in that set of months. So I would urge you to pass it and to amend the time that it goes into effect. So it goes into effect January 1st rather than August 1st. I think we are behind the curve on this issue as a city. Amherst has passed this and has not had any kind of catastrophic closing of businesses or restaurants because of it. As the resolution that sort of accompanies this points out, many cities and municipalities in the state and over the country have passed things similar to this. Multiple states have passed it on a statewide level. I don't think we should wait to put it into effect until August. I think we should put it into effect before we have an entire season of takeout containers. And some restaurants are already doing this. I trust in the ingenuity of our restaurant community to be able to work with this resolution. So I would urge you to pass it and to amend the time that it goes into effect and push the time sooner. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Richard Hendrick, please.
I'm here somewhere. Did I push the right button?
You sure did. You sure did. Hi.
Oh, it's a good start. I won't keep you long. My name is Richard Hendrick, 30 Main Street, North Hampton. I just want to share, I guess, my face and my voice and my intention to stay in the background watching the folks that are going to be doing the work on the Commission of Policing. I've found that's something that I'm very interested in. I was very impressed with so many people who have voiced, given voice to this across a wide spectrum of interest, and I think it's a really, really important thing. I'm a clinical social worker. I've worked on the streets and shelters for about 25 years. I did not put in an application, if you will, for a number of reasons. One is that I felt that other folks would be better served by, I think, doing this because I don't want to take a seat of a person of color. I think that's, that's an important thing for me. So my intention is just to enjoy the technology and enjoy the ability of being able to follow the work of the Commission and then to share, share my thoughts as they come and share any thoughts, any research that I can come up with that may be of help. I reached out to Counselor Jarrett, and he responded rather immediately to a little piece I sent to him about the Kerner Commission that was done 50 years ago that dealt with many of these matters. And, and, and so I have his, I have his email or whatever that thing is. And so I'll be, I'll be sending things along, and I appreciate the opportunity of doing this, and I thank you all for doing what you do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Rena Pi.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Rena Pi. I live at 60 Crescent Street in North Hampton. I'm a member of Two Degrees, and I'm a retired MD. And it's been my great pleasure to work with, with the Youth Commission and with Counselors Mayory and Dwight in crafting the proposed plastic reduction legislation. The climate crisis has demanded my attention, so I will begin by talking about oil and petrochemicals in the largest view, which we need in order to understand the stakes of this legislation. Before it was oil, the carbon that makes it up was part of a living organism, plant or animal. Over millions of years, this dead organism was converted to oil under tectonic heat and pressure. Under the crust of the earth, this oil is harmless, but as we know, the process of extracting, refining, manufacturing, and transporting result in irreversible damage to our planet. At the level of manufacturing, for example, just last week Hurricane Laura set a petrochemical plant ablaze in Louisiana, sending billowing clouds of pollution into the toxic soup that already characterizes that neighborhood's air. And what does this vast and vastly damaging process of extraction yield? Among other things, a styrofoam cup that sits on a shelf for some weeks is used for coffee for some minutes and results in plastic pollution, which then lasts for tens of thousands of years. As our energy-related needs shift to wind and solar, the petrochemical industry has responded by creating more plastic production plants and more plastic, much of it in the form of packaging. At least 40% of this plastic is discarded after one brief use. There is truly no place for it to go. The 2020 CIEL report warns that the greenhouse gas emissions from plastic jeopardize our ability to keep the global temperature rise below 1.5 degrees centigrade. If plastic production stays on its current trajectory by 2030, greenhouse gas emissions from plastic could reach 1.34 billion tons per year. Plastics are made from fossil fuels, and plastic results in greenhouse gas emissions at every stage of its lifecycle. As you all know, there are many other reasons to take the sustainability step, including the multitude of health hazards to our individual human bodies such as cancers, immune and endocrine dysfunctions, birth defects, and developmental and reproductive effects. But from the point of view of the health of the planet and future generations, plastic is unsustainable. North Hampton has made a sustainability pledge. We need to recognize the many toxic roles plastic production, use, and disposal play at every stage of its lifecycle, in particular, not ignoring the enormous price related to climate change. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Denise Lello.
Hi, my name is Denise Lello. I live in Ward 2A at 35 Woodline Avenue, and I'm speaking today on behalf of myself and the North Hampton Chapter of Mothers Out Front in support of the Plastics Reduction and Sustainability Ordinance that will be introduced tonight. The estimates that I include in my remarks below were taken from the UN Environment Report, Beat Plastic Pollution, from 2018. We humans produce about 300 million tons of plastic waste every year, which is nearly equivalent in weight to the entire human population. That's a tough one to think about. About 60% of the more than 8.3 billion tons of plastic that's been produced since the early 1950s has ended up in a landfill or the natural environment, and we all know about the oceans and rivers. Single-use plastics used in the restaurant trade account for a substantial part of these plastics. More than 99% of plastics are produced from chemicals that are derived from fossil fuels. By 2050, the plastic industry could account for 20% of the world's total oil consumption. In an article just a few days ago, in the August 30th, 2020 issue of the New York Times, there is a report that an industry group, industry group, excuse me, representing chemical and fossil fuel companies is trying to influence trade negotiations in Kenya to press Kenya to reverse its plastic bag ban and continue importing foreign plastic garbage. Given the environmental and human costs of fossil fuel extraction, plastics manufacture, and disposal, the use of single-use plastic ware is simply not ethical. So for the sake of the biosphere, we need to limit demand for and use of single-use plastics. The plastic reduction ordinance that you will consider this evening is a laudable step. North Hampton should join the 40-plus communities across Massachusetts and others across the country and the world that have already banned single-use plastic bags, packaging, and food service ware. We're proud of Rena Pi and Noah Cassis and the Youth Commission for the work that they've done, in particular, their ongoing efforts to work with our local businesses to find ways to ease the financial strain of this necessary transition. We hope you'll approve this ordinance. Thank you for considering.
Thank you. Okay. Hildegard, I'm going to try and unmute you again. Laura, can you give it a try?
Yes.
All right, we're pressing Ask to Unmute. So on your phone, it might be saying that the host is trying to unmute you, so try hitting star six. I don't know what is going on because we've heard from you before and we made it work, so I'm not sure what's happening, Hildegard. I'm very sorry. We'll get to the bottom of it. Okay, in the meantime, Pete.
My name is Pete Coranzas. I'm from East Hampton, Massachusetts. I own a business in downtown North Hampton, and I'm here to speak about the Shared Streets and Spaces Project. The business is in North Hampton. Many of us did not survive the COVID winter. The lockdown took more of us out, and a lot of us were just getting by until this project hit, and now it's basically squeezing the most at-risk businesses to the point of collapse, and they are going to fail. I have sent the council and the city all my documentation. There are now 53 businesses against this. My petition, general petition, is over 1,000 people. We are being ignored. I do not know what else. You need to see to realize how serious the situation is. It is doing damage to us. If you want a sidewalk and a bike path and no town, then I can understand it, but if you want the city to survive, something needs to be done. That's all.
Thank you. Next is the email address cpi@williams.edu.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. So Chris Pi, I'm on Crescent Street in North Hampton, and like, I'm going to be echoing Eli here a bit and saying a word about a concern that I know is in people's, front of people's minds about the timing of the current proposed plastic reduction ordinance. Why advance legislation that will inevitably mean additional expenses for business? Business adjusts at the moment when those businesses are especially at risk with the pandemic. That's a real anxiety, which is why the implementation of the proposed legislation is now set for August 2021, about a year from now, and allows for hardship exemptions. Even so, the fact of the matter is that particularly compared to the expense of labor, the cost of packaging for businesses remains a small portion of total expenses, insofar as there inevitably will be some additional expenses, especially around commercial composting, for instance. It's unfair that such costs be borne exclusively by those businesses which have voluntarily taken on these measures. There's a tendency to imagine environmental concerns as a matter of idealistic aspirations as against bottom-line economic realities. But as we, as we've come to realize, when it comes to environmental concerns, saving costs generally simply means shifting costs. The small amount a producer saves becomes an expense borne by consumers and municipalities in the form of trash management, landfill and incineration costs, and environmental remediation. Expand the picture to include petrochemical extraction and production, and the externalized costs become extraordinary, and those expenses will return, they are returning, to haunt businesses and individuals alike. We shouldn't let the timing of the current proposal distort our judgment about its feasibility. As Ezekiel has noted, many communities like our own have already instituted comparable legislation: Cambridge, Lexington, Amherst, Pittsfield, Williamstown. Those communities are managing their way through the current crisis with no discussion of rescinding environmental guidelines, which has simply become part of the landscape of conscientious governance. Meanwhile, locally, we're fortunate to have resources such as CET available to help businesses negotiate the transition. Finally, there are costs other than the monetary ones. North Hampton made a commitment to carbon neutrality. The current proposal is precise to the kind of legislation necessary to remain true to that aim. As a community, we have another resource worth harboring in the young people who have passionately and intelligently shepherded this legislative proposal. To fall, to fall short of their vision of what North Hampton should be, particularly when it's a matter of being true to commitments the city has already made, is to squander something genuinely valuable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Robert Eastman.
Hi, I'm Robert. I live in Ward 3A in North Hampton. I just wanted to mention quickly how convoluted the process of finding and meeting information on the city's website was. It is not on the city council's homepage. I had to go to the calendar to get the information. Even then, the agendas button, it directed me to, to not bring me to the meeting info tonight. So I would just urge you to make that, put that in a more obvious place. But the reason that I am speaking tonight is because there's been no response to three petitions sent to David Narcoitz, Police Chief Jody Casper, and Captain Robert Powers, which hundreds of people have signed, calling for the removal of police who have records of alleged racism and unjust conduct. It's pretty upsetting that Chief Casper cut new recruits and people of color. It felt like a very manipulative publicity stunt to put them on the line before those who caused the most harm. So I would just ask the council, along with those who signed the petition, to demand a response from each of them. I feel like there is also an extreme lack of transparency from the police department. I feel very distrustful of the work the Police Review Commission is about to do, which I'd like to say is the document about the commission claims is asked for by the community. I don't remember anyone asking for this commission to be formed in the first place. But I just wanted to point out that in many states, personnel files of police officers are publicly available. But in North Hampton, the police department wants to charge the community $10,000 to provide this information through Freedom of Information Act. The high cost of the request is allegedly due to the fact that many of the personnel records are not in a centralized database beyond a certain date and are located in individual officer profiles. They're hard copies on paper. I am honestly pretty astounded that this information has not been digitized yet, which puts them in danger of being lost to damage such as floods and fire or misplacement. I think we've all read in the news of files and other police departments across the country mysteriously disappearing. I am speaking to demand that this information not only be digitized immediately, but that they are released in good faith to the public at no charge so that we can hold our city department funded by taxpayer dollars accountable. This is especially pertinent, as the council considers a resolution that declares racism a public health emergency. Officers with records of racism and misconduct, such as Captain Powers and Lieutenant Alan Browski, should be removed immediately if we are serious about the health and well-being of our neighbors. And finally, I just want to state my support for both Counselor Jarrett and Quinlan's amendments to that resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Caroline Gier.
Okay. Hi there. How are you? I'm Caroline Gier, and I work at the International Language Institute, and I so appreciate all the important testimony that we've heard tonight. I'm here in support of the resolution recognizing the importance of the 2020 census and encouraging residents of the city of North Hampton to promote and complete the census to ensure a fair and complete count. The International Language Institute has just celebrated 36 years in downtown North Hampton, and we've been working with immigrants and refugees for over 30 years. ILI and so many of our community organizations are working hard to make sure that those who are referred to as the hard-to-count individuals are counted. Immigrants and refugees often are those that are hard to count. We look for your support to make sure that these individuals who offer so much to our community and deserve to be counted, be counted. In these extraordinary times, it is important that we all collaborate together and recognize the importance of the 2020 census and make sure that everyone is welcome and counted here in North Hampton. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Neely Semai.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for calling on me. My name is Neely Semai. I am, I live in North Hampton, Ward 1, 210 State Street, and I'm also the Director of Outdoor Education for Abundance Farm. And I'm here, excuse me, one second. Guys, I need you to be quiet in the background, please. Thank you. I'm here to testify in support of the Plastics Reduction and Sustainability Ordinance as well. I want to first say thank you to the Youth Commission for bringing it to my attention, and I really appreciate that they've been doing such amazing work on this. I, I think everybody, there's a lot of other people spoke eloquently about the impacts of polystyrene and plastics on human health, both at the creation and the consumption, and on our birds. And I know we've all seen the images of the guts of the whales and the turtles who've inhaled our plastics out in the ocean. And I also really appreciate that people spoke on the link to climate change, both at the production level, plastic impacts climate change, but also after that single use, these single-use disposables, what happens is, once they're in a landfill, they're, they're off-gassing greenhouse gases at a very strong rate, so it creates this really bad feedback loop. So I think, I think we've heard a lot about the impact and why it's important to reduce climate change, to reduce to reduce our plastic use for climate change and other reasons. I just wanted to say a few words about how change gets made, especially environmental change, from our experience at Abundance Farm, because I do understand the fear of impacting small businesses. So, you know, we kind of hunted down whatever plastics that we were using on the farm, you know, as much as possible, especially, you know, single uses and things being laminated and things like that, and eliminated them to a large degree, although there's always still work to do, and that's the work you do on your own. But we have this pick-your-own program, and we really put an emphasis on being welcoming and wanting people from all different kinds of economic backgrounds to feel welcome. And the last thing we'd want is to put a hardship on someone. So for a long time, my first few years there, we had plastic bags that we offered people. And we did that in the name of, you know, that if you don't want to make hardship for anyone, and that we saw it as a need, that people would see it as a need, and if it wasn't there. So there we were doing our best to reduce plastic, but still, like, there was this major contribution. And then when the plastic bag ban went into effect, I remember there was a lot of people concerned and complaining, and there was complaining, and then it just went into effect one day, and everybody kind of adapted, because there was a long time for businesses to adapt, and even at Abundance Farm, we adapted and we found other alternatives. And it was just a really good lesson in the role of government to help people with good intentions along. And I just want everyone to remember that that's that's the role that government at any scale has. And I'm really in support of this, and that we can look to places, businesses in town, like restaurants, that I already are saying, now when I go to do takeout during COVID, they have a little thing that says, we are not putting plasticware into our takeout containers, into our takeout orders unless you specifically ask for it. So we can see that some of our businesses are already shifting in that direction.
Thank you. That was time. So if you could just finish your sentence. Okay.
I also I also just want to say I did not know about ordinance 20.112 on light pollution, and that that's a fantastic thing as well, and we're also in support of that.
Thank you very much. Next is Jonathan Lescetti.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Lescetti. I live at 26 Blackbridge Trail Florence, and I'm here as a member of the North Hampton Youth Commission. I strongly believe that the Plastic Reduction and Sustainability Ordinance is an important step that our city can and should take to help our town transition away from city use, from single-use items and packaging that hurt our climate. Instead, we should move to move towards alternative products that serve the same purpose without hurting the environment. I think that for people who live in North Hampton, it is very hard for us to see the direct changes that are happening because of climate change. We don't live by the ocean where trash is washing up on the shores and where catastrophic storms are wreaking havoc on communities and infrastructure. We don't live near Death Valley where temperatures peaked at 130 just degrees just last week. And we don't live in parts of California where thousands of people are having to evacuate due to the wildfires raging throughout the state. Instead, we live in North Hampton, an area of the country that sees little effect from the climate change happening each day, aside from some lack of rain or a little less snow one year. It is easy for us to pretend like these things aren't happening, but they are, and right now, it is so easy, it is hard. We, sorry, I lost my spot, but they are, and we have created an opportunity for us to do something about it by making an overall small sacrifice for our community to ban plastics in restaurants and retailers. But this change matters. Not only does it decrease our carbon footprint and prevent unneeded waste, but it, but to set an example for the rest of the state and country of what steps can be taken to make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Daniel Kennedy.
Hi, my name is Dan Kennedy. I'm in Ward 4 in North Hampton. I'm here to both support the idea of the police, the North Hampton Police Commission, but also to really emphasize that 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 our responsibility to push for, make changes, to evaluate possibilities and to work together as a community, do not begin or end with that commission, and that the commission going forward will need the support of the council. Robert Eastman already brought up the fact that there are a number of requests for information that groups have made and individuals have made, that the North Hampton Police Department has either put an undue cost on or outright denied, including just knowing what equipment police officers normally have available to them as they are walking through our communities, which I think is a pretty reasonable request. So we will need help with that. It's something that's going to take time, but we will need the council to back up all of these sort of requests that we make on behalf of the public and that we are participating in. So please do not forget that even though this commission is set to be created, and that's that's one step, that it's not the only avenue to pursue, and that we all have a responsibility to continue through all the other avenues that we have. That's all.
Thank you. Robbie is next.
Hi, um, thank you all for this opportunity, but um, my name is Robbie Bocon. I'm the general manager at E-Site Grill. I want to speak about the Plastics Reduction Bill real quick and actually ask all the councillors to urge them to pass the bill, as is, without an amendment to speed up the date, because currently, we've had a lot of issues with the specific products that we've been able to use. Distribution issues between, we use about seven different purveyors, all of which we get similar products from, but having a constant supply of the things that we try to order hasn't necessarily been steady. And we're even now starting to find issues with gloves creeping up, so stick to the timeline, please. The 2021 deadline is fantastic. Any restaurant should be able to stick to that, given that COVID doesn't go the way it goes, but um, as of late, we haven't been able to necessarily get what we've been trying to get. In the past, we've had, they were paper-cardboard takeout things, and we haven't been able to have access to those. All problems that hopefully, given the current circumstances, will have blown over and supply will be fine. So again, I'm asking city council to pass the bill as is, without a speed up on the date. Because it's absolutely nothing that that anybody in their right mind should oppose, because it is our environment that we're speaking of, and taking those steps is important for our future. But if you could, please, not necessarily add any kind of amendment to the date, given our current situation with what we can or can't order lately. So um, again, urging city council to pass that, and thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I, all right, hit the garden and give it one more go. Try star six on your phone. All right, I'm very sorry. We, you know, please always feel free to, I know that you don't have access to emails, so I know that Laura, you do talk to Laura, so Laura can always get a convey a message to us. I'm very sorry, and we'll try and figure out why you're not able to unmute and speak to us. I apologize. Okay, seeing no further public comment, we will convene the meeting. Laura, I'm going to ask for the roll, please. I am, let me, let me just ask quickly, if everyone who's not a councillor, if I could ask you the favor of turning off your video, that would very much help me to be able to see the council. Thank you. I think I have everyone unmuted, but we'll find out.
Ready for roll call?
Yes, please.
Councillor Dwight?
Here.
Councillor Foster?
Here.
Councillor Jarrett?
Here.
Councillor Labarge?
Oh, nope, there's one.
Councillor Labarge?
Can you mute Councillor Labarge? You got it. Okay. Yes.
Councillor Maori?
Here.
Councillor Nash?
Here.
Councillor Quinlan?
Here.
Councillor Shara?
Here.
And Councillor Thorpe?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a call.
Okay, we're going to start up. Our first item on our agenda are a public, a package of public hearings, or public hearings on a package of three National Grid Verizon poll petitions for King Street, one National Grid Verizon poll petition for Summer Street, and one National Grid Verizon poll petition for Finn Street. I'm going to note that these were posted to meet legal requirements. And before I ask for a motion, I am going to read the DPW recommendations for these petitions. It is loading very slowly. No, faster for you than me. I'll start reading on here and then switch up. Okay, so this is a memo from DPW Director Donna Lascalia to Donna Lascalia from Maggie Chan, the staff civil engineer, on these petitions. Joint or identical poll petition, hold on one second, I'm just trying to be able to see this, that's squinting. Poll petition location number 24881246-1. National Grid is proposing to relocate two holes, number 21 and 25 on King Street, beginning at a point approximately 34 feet northeast of the center line of the intersection of King Street and North Street, and continuing approximately 230 feet in the northwest direction due to DOT roadwork. There are no conflicts with public utilities at the proposed location for number 21. There is a possibility of a conflict with the sewer at the proposed location of number 25. The following is required. Caution should be exercised while excavating at this location. The hole for the new pole location shall be inspected by the DPW prior to actual pole installation. 24 hours notice, the DPW is required by calling 413-587-1570. If the sewer is disturbed, it must be repaired slash relocated by the contractor at the direction of the city engineer. National Grid must obtain an excavation trench permit issued by the city of North Hampton prior to construction. Joint or identical pole location number 24881246-2. National Grid is proposing to install one pole, number 28-50, and relocate three poles, number 28, number 31, and number 33 on King Street, beginning at a point approximately 67 feet southeast of the center line of the intersection of King Street and Hooker Avenue, and continuing approximately 391 feet in the north direction due to DOT roadwork. There are no conflicts with public utilities at the proposed locations of number 28, number 28-50, or number 33. There is a possibility of a conflict with a water service at the proposed location of number 31. The following is required. Caution should be exercised while excavating at this location. The hole for the pole location shall be inspected by the DPW prior to actual pole installation. 24 hours notice, DPW is required by calling 413-587-1570. The water service is disturbed. It must be repaired or replaced by the contractor at the direction of the city engineer. National Grid must obtain an excavation or trench permit issued by the city of North Hampton prior to construction. Next is joint or identical pole location number 24881246-3. National Grid is proposing to relocate three poles, number 26, number 39, and number 40 on King Street, beginning at a point approximately 178 feet southeast of the center line of the intersection of King Street and Hooker Avenue, and continuing approximately 290 feet in the north direction due to DOT roadwork. There are no conflicts with public utilities at the proposed locations for number 26, number 39, and number 40. National Grid must obtain, must obtain an excavation or trench permit issued by the city of North Hampton prior to construction. Joint or identical pole location number 24881246-5. National Grid is proposing to relocate one pole, number 2, on Finn Street, beginning at approximately 138 feet southwest of the center line of the intersection of King Street and Finn Street due to DOT roadwork. There are no conflicts with public utilities at the proposed location for number 2. National Grid must obtain excavation trench permit issued by the city of North Hampton prior to construction. Okay, that's.
I may move to open the package, the public hearing from the package of the National Grid poll petitions.
Motion's been made and seconded to open the public hearing. And I know that we have someone here from National Grid, Aubreyan Cortez, pardon me if I mispronounced your name. I'm looking for you.
We should vote to open the public hearing.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Roll call, please, and opening the public hearing, please.
Councillor Dwight?
Yes.
Councillor Foster?
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett?
Yes.
Councillor Labarge?
Yes.
Councillor Maori?
Yes.
Councillor Nash?
No, hold on.
Councillor Nash, has he stepped away?
Yeah.
Go with the dog.
So that's a yes, I'm assuming. Councillor Quinlan?
Yes.
Councillor Shara?
Yeah.
And Councillor Thorpe?
Yes.
Okay, so the public hearing is opened, and I'm asking for the proponents, and I see Lisa, but I've been informed that.
Gina, I think it's under Cortez.
Yeah.
I was unmuted.
Oh, hi, hello.
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for joining us.
No problem. I unfortunately don't have a webcam, so.
Okay, I understand. Um, would you like to speak to these poll petitions, please?
Yes, as as you stated, the poll petitions are due to a request from the DOT roadwork. So we are relocating a few poles based off the work that DOT will be doing, and relocating them to keep the lines straight, to limit on lines and to cut down on the numbers of anchors needed, as well as just being able to fit them with the DOT's roadwork.
Um, are there questions from the council? And then, Councillor Dwight?
I presume, given the DPW's memos, that National Grid is prepared to meet the conditions.
Yes, sir. I believe this had been done with all the utilities, so these concerns were probably brought up during those meetings. We are, National Grid is prepared to continue with all the requirements.
Thank you.
Councillors, other questions? Are there other proponents for this hearing that would like to speak? Use your raise hand feature. So that's at the bottom menu bar, at the bottom of your Zoom screen, if you hit participate, it's going to open a panel, and at the bottom of the panel, it's going to have a raise hand feature. So if there are other proponents, let me know now. Seeing none, are there any opponents to these petitions? Okay, same process to raise your hand? Seeing none, any other comments from the public? No? Any other questions or comments from the council? All right, Councillor Dwight, you're on.
I moved to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councillor Dwight, seconded by Councillor Thorpe, to close the public hearing. Any discussion on closing? Roll call, please. Laura, I'm closing the hearing.
Councillor Foster?
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett?
Yes.
Councillor Labarge?
Yes.
Councillor Maori?
Yes.
Councillor Nash? I've been difficult to hear him. Was that a yes?
That is a yes.
Thank you.
Dog that's barking.
Oh, I see. Councillor Quinlan?
Yes.
Councillor Shara?
Yes.
Councillor Thorpe?
Yes.
And Councillor Dwight?
Yes.
Okay, that hearing is closed. Laura, since you're the host, as a co-host, I don't seem to be able to make the other couns- I don't seem to be able to make the other counselors' co-hosts, which would allow them to unmute themselves. Would you be able to do that?
Sure, let me try to do that.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on from the hearing, we'll take that up in the consent agenda. We have updates from the council president and committee chairs. I am, I'm gonna, I'm looking for Mayor Narckowitz, just so he can join me. If he'd like to. And there he is. So Mayor Narckowitz and I are very pleased to be able to announce the appointees to the Northampton Policing Review Commission this evening. First and foremost, thank you to all that sent in letters of interest. Many of you spent a great deal of time and energy in expressing your experience and experiences and, and what this work means to you. It was an extraordinary pool of applicants and every person would have been a thoughtful contributor to the commission. It was very hard to not engage so many that were so willing to give so much to the process. Many who applied noted that they appreciated the focus and commitment on centering people who are Black, Indigenous, people of color, LGBTQ, or from other marginalized communities who've been harmed by policing practices. I am happy to say that we exceeded our requirement that the commission include representation of not less than eight members who are of those communities. The commission has nine members who are Black, Indigenous, or people of color, and four of the appointees identify as members of the LGBTQ community. Many applicants noted that if they were not chosen, they intended and looked forward to participating by providing comments, testimony, and information at the commission's meetings and in the public hearings. I'm particularly grateful for that willingness to be involved, whether as a member of the commission or of the public. I do hope that everyone who was willing to give their time and experience to serve will feel welcomed and moved to still be involved. I think that's a key component of this commission's work, and I want to make sure that the engagement we saw here at council is not lost and carries over to the commission. Thank you to the council. It is clear that you all did the work in your wards and throughout the community to make people aware of the urgency and opportunity and encourage people to apply to the commission. And thank you also for sharing your recommendations with me. A huge thank you to Laura Kretzler for her work with me to get the information about the commission up and out throughout the community and for processing and acknowledging the letters and for helping me in responding to requests. This was a very significant additional amount of work for her that was coming at, was definitely one of the busiest times I have ever experienced on the council. As always, Laura, your help and your guidance and your expertise are invaluable. We could not possibly do any of what we do without you, so thank you. Very much. The commission that has been chosen brings extensive and varied personal and professional experience and will be able to dig deep, listen and engage with the community and have productive conversations together. And we very much look forward to the recommendations. I am pleased to announce the appointees and I'm going to attempt to share them on my screen. There we go. You should all be able to see them. So, in alphabetical order, the appointments to the Northampton Policing Review Commission are Lois Erns, Elizabeth Baraha-Roman, Booker Bush, M.D., he is the Human Rights Commission appointee, Daniel Kennedy, Nick Fleischer, David Hous, Counselor Alex Jarrett, Carmen Lopez, Javier Luengo-Garido, Dana Olivo, Namdi Pole, Ph.D., Counselor Michael Quinlan, Josie Rosales, Cynthia Swobis, and Larissa Rivera Gonzalez. Thank you very much for serving our community and for doing this important work. So, that, I'm gonna stop that sharing. Mayor Narckowitz, is there any, anything you'd like to add?
No, I just want to echo what, what you said, Council President, about the, about the many excellent letters of interest that we both received and thank folks for their interest in serving. It was a very challenging decision process because there was so many strong applicants. And I too want to thank my staff and Court Klein, who similarly worked to, to help organize and process and be in communication with the folks who applied. As you said, between, between the council and the mayor, we had almost 65 letters of interest that we received. And again, I want to thank not only the folks willing to serve, but the folks who wanted to engage in the process, and I hope they will stay engaged in the process. And I'm looking forward to supporting the work of the commission and, and looking forward to ultimately the, the recommendations that they will bring forward to the council and to the mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Labarge.
Yes. I just have a little update that I'd like to talk about.
Is, oh, is this like one-minute announcements or?
No, it's an update from council presidents and committee chairs.
Oh, okay. Sure, we have, the mayor and I have another committee to announce.
Go ahead.
Maybe we'll do that first and then I will go to committee chairs. Thank you so much.
That's fine.
Okay. Okay, any other? Seeing no other comments, I'm going to move on to the next committee that we're announcing this evening. So the mayor and I are also announcing the appointments to the periodic review of ordinances committee, which by the charter is a special committee that is convened on years ending with zero or within a five or a zero. Per ordinance, this is a five-member committee consisting of three counselors appointed by the council president and two members appointed by the mayor, who are voters of the city. And the committee is assisted by the city solicitor. Laura, thanks again to Laura. Laura has agreed to provide administrative support to the special committee, and I am very grateful for that. The charge of this committee is to review some or all of the ordinances of the city to prepare a proposed revision or recodification of them. In this committee's review, we are asking the committee to give attention to and put a special emphasis on reviewing the city's ordinances for equity and inclusion and to check for racial and ethnic bias and disparities. So I'm going to announce the appointees to this committee. The council appointees are Council Vice President Jim Nash, Counselor Mary Ann Labarge, Counselor John Thorpe, and the mayor's resident appointees are Megan Peck and Jeff Napolitano. We thank them for being willing to serve the city, doing this important and detailed work. Mayor Narckowitz, anything you want to add to that?
Nope. Just, just obviously thank, thank you to all the folks who are willing to serve on this. And we obviously got a little bit of a later start because of the pandemic. And so, but I know that City Solicitor Seawald will be working to support the committee as outlined by ordinance. And we'll look forward to the, to any recommendations that come out of the, the study of this group.
Okay, Counselor Labarge.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I want, I just want to speak in reference to City Service Committee, Counselor Michael Quinlan, Counselor Rachel Moore, and Vice Chair Counselor Karen Foster, and I as the City Counselor, Mary Ann Labarge as chair. We have interviewed several residents in our city who have been interviewed to be on many city boards, committees, commissions. We have had many reappointments and fill-in vacancies so far. I want to thank all of the residents who we have interviewed so far, who want to be part of our community and be actively engaged to make a vibrant city. Many of our applicants have experience and are well-educated in the field of what board or commission or committee they would like to volunteer in our city. Thank you from City Service Committee of you volunteering your service to help make us our city as vibrant as can be. And I just thought that was something for us to acknowledge because we've had quite a bit and we're planning on more. So, thank you, Counselor.
Thank you for that. We do thank everyone for serving the city in that way. Any other committee chair announcements? Okay. Oh, yeah, Counselor Labarge.
Yes. I think my hand is too tiny. I want to thank Donna LaScalia, our Director of the Department of Public Works, for always being there to work with us, counselors, especially with what has happened with the COVID-19. It has placed our city in a position that is devastating to our businesses and families. I want to thank her for working with me and Counselor Jarrett on site visits on issues that were of quality of life for residents and safety, who she has come to meet with us on site to help us solve these problems. So, and having residents there and her listening to residents is extremely valuable. So I want to thank her for her support, and I know Alex Jarrett would feel the same way too, of all her support of Florence Road and Cross Street on the safety issues. And we want to thank her and her staff for doing what had to be done, placing signs in areas of safety for all involved. So thank you, Donna LaScalia. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Okay, other one-minute announcements? Counselor Maori.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to, you know, as we approach this new and very different-looking school year, I wanted to take a minute to recognize and thank our teachers, school employees, administrators, and the school committee for all their thoughtful and hard work this summer. It's incredibly stressful to have only not-good choices to work with and no easy solutions. I'd also like to recognize students who are having to go through something we've never had to. And finally, parents and guardians who often go unrecognized in the equation of remote and online learning, as is historically true of all domestic labor. We are all in the same storm, but we are in different boats. A half a year in, many of us, myself included, struggle just to keep running a 24-hour household, hold down our jobs while trying to provide for the basic needs of our children, let alone ourselves. Nothing reasonable is being asked of any of us right now. We can only try while managing expectations of ourselves and others. Keeping our children and ourselves as physically and emotionally well as possible under these circumstances is what success looks like right now. As a community, we're all going to need to support each other in this new school year as we navigate this uncharted territory. We'll need a lot of patience and compassion since the only promise right now is of uncertainty. Thank you.
Thank you, indeed. We are feeling that. Northampton is really searching for some volunteers. They, they're looking for volunteers specifically for their Survival Center Grow Food Northampton Community Food Distribution Project. They would like me to specifically ask counselors if you could help out. But I said that I also would announce this need at the meeting for anyone who would be able to give some time to volunteer. This is the collaboration that came about after the Survival Center needed to close their building back in April because of COVID-19. Since then, on Tuesdays, there are teams of volunteers that go to Meadowbrook, Hampshire Heights, Florence Heights, and the Lumber Yard to distribute both Survival Center food and fresh produce from area farms. And on Thursdays, the same is distributed to senior housing in Northampton. During this time, it has been a key way to provide food to people who are food insecure and also a way for local farmers who's lost, who have lost income due to the closing of schools and colleges to have some, a place to bring their produce. There has been a very steady stream of volunteers over the summer, but with the changes in schedule that the fall is bringing, there is a need for new volunteers to fill the gaps. So the times that are needed are Tuesdays from 9:45 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. and on Thursdays from 9:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. And if you have questions, please contact Francie at growfoodnorthampton.org or go to their website, growfoodnorthampton.org, and look for the Community Food Distribution Project on their site. And there is a form to volunteer on that site. So counselors are particularly looking for us to, to help out. But anyone who's listening, please, if you are, if you possibly can be available during that time, it would be a great help. Okay, any other announcements? Okay, seeing none. We are going to, oh, sorry. Mr. Mayor, any communications or proclamations from you? I don't believe so.
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to resolutions. First up is, on second reading, this is 20.107, a resolution in support of actions to combat the public health crisis of systemic racism.
Move to approve, please.
Motion's been made by Counselor Dwight and seconded by Counselor Thorpe. So for discussion, there, there are two amendments that were brought to the council at first reading, and there was a request that was made by one of the sponsors, Counselor Dwight, for language for those amendments to be written and given to us. And so those, I have those here, they're on the agenda. So I'm gonna go ahead. Actually, I will, the people who wrote the amendments, I'll let you read them if you'd like. So the first one is Counselor Jarrett's suggested, suggested amendment. My computer's very slow all of a sudden. If you have it in front of you, Counselor Jarrett, if you'd like to read it, please go ahead.
Sure, yeah. So I guess I'll just read the, the portion, the paragraph just before it so that we know the context, which is, "Be it further resolved that we will devote our efforts to expanding the challenging but necessary community conversation on racism and on all of our respective culpabilities." And, and then this is the addition, "Be it further resolved that we have an obligation to advance racial equity by undoing the inequities found in the law and to proactively pass ordinances and make budget decisions that address inequity during the periodic review of ordinances, which occurs every five years as per the city charter section 10-5 and at other times when it comes to the attention of the council. We will act to update ordinances that have been shown to have a disproportionate impact on communities of color and adversely affect vulnerable populations. We will also consider these impacts during our annual budget process and as financial orders are brought to the council." And then, you know, after that, it goes on to, which is not the addition, "Be it further resolved that we call for increased resources from the Commonwealth for comprehensive anti-racism trainings for state and municipal employees and students." So I could speak to that as well now?
You have to.
Yeah, make a motion to make that amendment.
And I second it.
Motion's been made and seconded, so discussion on that amendment?
Great.
Yes, please.
So, yeah, just first, thanks for the sponsors for having the courage to put this resolution forward. I think that resolutions express our commitment as a council to do the work that is within our power. So it holds us accountable. So when someone raises an issue and says, you know, you said this was important, you passed a resolution about it, we either need to do it or we need to explain ourselves as to why, you know, our opinion has changed. And the five-year review is gonna be happening in the next few months. I think this amendment will be a recent reminder how we can bring an anti-racist perspective to our legislation. And to think a lot about intent versus impact. I think a lot of these ordinances did not have the, do not have an intent to be discriminatory, but they still may have an impact, and we have to consider that. The National League of Cities has compiled many examples of ordinances that are rooted in racial equity. So we can look at Minneapolis's decision to eliminate single-family zoning. Albany has a police officer information ordinance. Seattle has fair chance hiring and fair chance housing ordinances. And then the National Low Income Housing Coalition has resources on ordinance that, ordinances that show disparate impact. So I'd recommend that the ordinance review committee will look at this information. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion on that amendment? Okay, seeing none. Um, roll call, please, on the amendment, Laura?
Okay, Counselor Jarrett.
Yes?
Counselor LaBarge.
All right, hold on. Counselor LaBarge, you're muted.
Hmm.
Counselor LaBarge, can you unmute, please? There you go.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Mayory?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
And Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Okay, that amendment passes. Um, so, next, Counselor Quinlan, would you like to read, um, the amendment that you're suggesting, please?
Yes, thank you very much. This would be, um, a proposed amendment to be included in 10-point plan, making it an 11-point, an 11-point plan. So, number 11, "Urge the mayor to establish an office of equity and human rights. To promote equity and reduce disparities within city government, provide guidance, education, and technical assistance to all municipal offices in achieving equitable outcomes and service. Support human rights and opportunities for everyone to achieve their full potential. Work to resolve issues rooted in bias and discrimination through research, education, and interventions."
Okay, um, can.
Do we need to motion?
Yep.
Move to add that amendment to the, to the resolution.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Seconded by Counselor Foster. Um, is that your hand?
Yeah, um, yes, only, only, um, I actually am in favor of, of the intent and construction of the, uh, that proposed amendment. One, one, one concern. Basically, what, uh, item number 11, listing it as item number 11 actually is an addendum to, at least this proceeds, it's an addendum to a 10-point plan that, uh, that, uh, came from the MBLLC. And the, number 11 wasn't that. So, that's, I think that could should be a standalone. I, I don't think you have to, uh, I, you know, have to number it. I think that it, we just do it following that list, that iteration of that list, and then be it further resolved that and include your, the language of your proposed amendment.
Okay. Right?
Does that make any sense? Did I, I realize it wasn't all that clear, but.
I, I found it clear enough to understand.
Okay, good. That's what counts.
And I'm grateful for the, for the information and the correction. That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Dwight. I was gonna make that same point, that this is, this is not our 10-point plan, so I, I don't want to alter it. Um, other comments? Oh, Counselor LaBarge?
Yes, thank you. On number 11, where it says, "I urge the mayor to establish, establish an office of equity and human rights." But don't we have, the mayor does have a Human Rights Commission that? So, I have a problem with that. For the mayor to establish an office of equity and human rights when he does have a Human Rights Commission? So, shouldn't there be something else instead of human rights on that? I don't know.
Counselor Quinlan, would you like to respond?
I, um, I'm, I'm not opposed to, to a different name. I, I, I want the mission of the office to be something. I would point out, we have a Board of Health and a Health Department, and they work in concert together. Why would an office named with the human rights in the name work in concert with that Human Rights Commission as well to achieve these goals? But, but if the name seems confusing and the, and the council feels strongly about it as a group, that, that it should have a different name to make it more clear, I'm, I'm open to, to that as well.
Especially when we're on the language, we're urging the mayor to establish an office of equity and human rights, which he does have an Office of Human Rights Commission, so.
Well, we have a Human Rights.
I don't know.
The office would be a funded department. Pardon me, I'm, I'm, I'm speaking out of turn. I'm sorry.
Well, you were responding to her query about your amendment, so that's fine. Be then. Um, so, Counselor Dwight and Counselor Jarrett?
I, I don't see them being mutually exclusive. And in fact, actually, I mean, part of the struggle for the Human Rights Commission historically has been, uh, trying to get a solid sense of identity and, and, and charge because the state laws, uh, there were a number of factors that had a rather serious impact on the ability for the Human Rights Committee to, um, function as an adjudication system. They, and it's too detailed and too problematic to go through right now to explain what that is. But I think what Counselor Quinlan's proposing and recommending is that it's something the, the two could be folded into each other, but this is entirely up to the mayor for that, in that respect. But the fact is, I don't think what he's recommending, neutralizes what currently what the Human Rights Commission does, but actually offers an opportunity for it to be enhanced and expanded and to give it more teeth, if you will. And so, um, you know, given within the, uh, the limitations of the Charter and Massachusetts State Law, I think that, I think this actually makes very good sense and is an appropriate thing to continue to advocate for.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yeah, similar arguments to, to, right now, you know, the Human Rights Commission is purely in advisory position, and it doesn't have funding. And so, an office would, would have funding and could carry out the work that the Human Rights Commission would advise them in. So, that, that would be my, my argument, the, the two go together.
Counselor Foster?
Counselor Quinlan, thank you for bringing this amendment forward to the resolution. I, I think this was something we talked about as well with the establishment of the Police Commission, that in order for progress to happen, there have to be city resources dedicated to it. And so, I, you know, I, I appreciate that, you know, that, that this idea of, of kind of formalizing city resources toward promoting equity and human rights. I think two very small, um, things is, perhaps, establishing an office, to me, of equity and human rights stands as establishing a new department, which, um, would be big and, and budget-heavy and, of course, critical. We may consider a position of an officer of equity and human rights or, or advocating for the, the establishment of a position that may or may not fall under another department's purview, which is just a small technical detail that, that might not even need to be edited. And, and then the last, the other thing that I would recommend, and I'm, I'm working on language, and you can think it through, but, um, I would picture somebody in this role would also need to continue to seek funding to further the work. And so, I, I would see grant development as, as a critical piece of something like that in order to further the work. And I think it's worth naming how important that would be.
Counselor Quinlan, would you like to respond?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, um, you know, I, I'm, again, I'm, I'm open to, uh, to modifying this in a way that, that, that the council as a group feel supportive around. My, my, my other, my only thing about it being a position, you know, would be, you know, only that what we're doing here is we're urging the mayor to do this. How, how the mayor accomplishes something like this in creating what I see myself as kind of an office of accountability for the city's processes and, uh, and business is, is his, his, his responsibility. We're, we're urging him to take that step. So, if it's, if it's through a position specifically or through a, a department, I, you know, I, I'm, I'm supportive of that idea. Again, the goal for me is not, is, is, is really to create this, this idea that, that everyone will be held accountable to treat everyone equally.
Other, uh, Counselor Dwight?
Yeah, just, I, I, I agree. Counselor Quinlan's point is, and the gist of this is to urge the mayor to establish this insofar as we don't establish departments. So, um, and then how that's realized, and if it's realized ultimately is up to the mayor. But the fact is, is what we're doing is endorsing and encouraging, um, a department that obviously has costs associated with it. And, but the fact is, it's an expense that's a worthy investment, and certainly it seems to be an urgent need for. So, that said, I think that, that, um, the language he, he offers does just that. And I think, I'm pretty sure that the mayor hears it, so.
Counselor Quinlan?
And if I could just, I mean, I, I wanted to just simply advocate for, for what, what I think about this idea. You know, first, with thanks to the sponsors for graciously allowing me to suggest anything to this resolution, because I was very impressed with the resolution from, from the first time I read it. But watching, watching how it evolved, I was, I was super impressed, and I'm, and I'm grateful. You know, my proposal is an encouragement that we take a very important step to not, uh, just leveling the playing field, but to take, creating a, a system of better accountability in how we level it and how we serve the residents of Northampton and how we be a more just municipality. You know, and, uh, again, just to put a fine point on it, how, how the mayor chooses to get there, you know, I think is, is okay with me, that, that, that's, that is his, his privilege and not ours. Our privilege would be to approve funding for something like this. So, I would look forward to that opportunity as well. And then, lastly, I would just say that, that I see this as an office giving the city a conscience, working to make sure that every action the city takes is handled equally for all, but specifically for seniors, residents with disabilities, people of color, LGBTQ+ people. What are we doing? How is it implemented? And does it unfairly impact anyone or segment of our population? So, with that, I ask my fellow councilors to join me in adding this to this excellent resolution.
Other comments on this amendment? Oh, Counselor Thor?
Thank you. And I also like to, uh, prior thank Counselor Jarrett for his amendment, and I'd like to thank Counselor Quinlan for your amendment. And I support it as is. And also noting that in our resolution that we're also asking the Commonwealth to devote, to devote resources, uh, for, for this and for other things to help combat systemic racism. So, the, I, I don't see an issue with what you have proposed here, so.
Okay, any further comments on this amendment? Seeing none, roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Mayory?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
And Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
Okay, that amendment passes. Um, Laura, I'm just gonna give you a heads up. You know, there's always gonna be some new fun technological challenge for me. For some reason, anything connected to the city website right now is not loading for me.
Okay.
Like at all. So, I'm gonna rely, I'm gonna have to rely on you to share your screen with the documents until, unless something gets rebooted. Every other site's looking for me, so it's something about the, the city site. Um, so, just an FYI. Um, other discussion on this resolution?
Um.
Counselor Mayory, is that you?
Yes, yes, I'm, uh, yeah, I was trying to find, um, yes, I had an amendment to offer. And I, I'm not sure, Laura, if it's something that you could screen share. If not, I can just read it. I apologize in advance. It's a little, oh, great. It's a little long, but because I collaborated with Counselor Jarrett, we wanted to make sure to maintain any kind of open-meeting law issue by not putting it in the agenda ahead of time. And so, really, um, so really, I, well, maybe we'll read it first, and then I'll say why reasoning. Or, would you like to read it? I, or.
Counselor Mayory, you may read it.
Oh, okay, thanks. My screen's really tiny. I'll try.
At least you can get it to load. I can't.
Yeah, there you go. So, on the, yeah, so whereas, so, you know, it said, "On May 29th, 2020, the American Public Health Association declared racism an ongoing public health crisis." And I wanted to add, and as well as Counselor Jarrett, "Deeming racism a barrier to health equity and a driving force of inequitable social determinants of health, the social, environmental, and economic factors that influence health, including employment, housing, education, access to healthcare, and nutritious food, impacting lifelong health outcomes even before birth." And then, back to the original amendment, uh, resolution. And on June 7th, 2020, the American Medical Association stated racism is an urgent threat to public health. And then I, and Counselor Jarrett added, "And whereas numerous studies have linked racism to negative health outcomes which are associated with increased risk for mental and physical chronic conditions such as heart disease, cancer, asthma, stroke, disproportionately high maternal and infant mortality, and most recently COVID-19. And the American College of Physicians has found that Black Americans in particular are at risk of being subjected to race-based discrimination and violence against..."
We can't hear you any longer.
Oh dear.
We can see you, but your sound, your sound just disappeared.
Yeah, I think I'm back, I think. Would you like me to comment now or do we?
More in voice, but not in face, but you probably...
Okay, okay. Yeah, should I make a comment now or do we open it up?
There should be a motion.
Oh, you're right, that's what I thought. Sorry, I got a little lost when I lost connection for a minute. Yeah, so a motion to amend, to add these amendments to the resolution?
Councillor Mayori, I think there's another section to this amendment.
Oh.
Oh dear.
I'm sorry, I'm having a...
Sorry, let me get back here.
Oh, yeah. I'm having internet issues, hold on. Yeah, I'm having, let's see, let's see if I can find it. Oh, did you not hear me because I cut out or you didn't?
You missed some of what you said. I'm not sure where you are, though, in your amendment.
Yeah, okay.
It was somewhere in the sentence, "and the American College of Physicians has found that Black Americans in particular..."
Oh, right, right. Yes.
After that.
Let me see. "American College of Physicians has found that Black Americans in particular are at risk of being subjected to race-based discrimination and violence against them and that hate crimes are a public health issue." I think that was it.
And if you scroll down.
Right, it's, I think, right, there's...
Do you want to have these be separate amendments or do you want to take them together?
I believe they have the same reasoning behind them for me. So I would take those two together. But I think councillor Jarrett's also saying, let's see, that there's, so why don't we look at these two together, I guess? Or...
Okay.
Yeah, I think that they're related, I mean, I think, yes.
Okay, so I think where we were was you made that motion.
Second.
It's been seconded by councillor Jarrett. Okay, discussion.
Amendments to the resolution, these two.
Okay, is discussion on them? I can't, I, okay, there we go, now I can see you all.
Wow.
Okay, I'm looking. Councillor Jarrett.
Well, I would just say that the public health language backs up the need for declaring racism a public health emergency. So that's my support for those two expansion or the additional whereas in the expansion.
Can I just say, I think we have a motion to accept those two paragraphs, the amendment of those two, but not a second?
Yeah, councillor Jarrett seconded.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay, councillor Mayori.
Right, I apologize, I'm going in and out, so I'm getting a little disoriented. So let me know if you don't catch something or I get off track. But basically, I'm in full support of this resolution. I'm very happy it's out here. And I really just wanted to expand it a bit to encompass the full spectrum of the racism barriers to health equity. And so that's why I wanted to talk about both chronic and acute disease and access to healthcare. Because really, the point is that it's racism, not race, which is killing Black people and people of color. And even when you control for social factors like education and income level, health disparities still endure, both in chronic, long-term indicators and in acute crises like the disproportionate rates of COVID-19 in the Black community and Indigenous community and the Latinx community. So that was my thinking about it, to add, just kind of to blossom what health means in terms of, through a racial equity lens.
Okay, hold on one sec. Councillor Dwight.
So this is reinforcing language to bolster or essentially footnote the declaration resolution, which I have no problem with. I think it's worth noting, though, that actually while it is a big list, it's actually incomplete. It's, there are more items, to be sure. And I don't know, you know, in fact, actually, we could probably create a document that's about 400 pages deep in some respect, inciting the health impacts realized and the ones unrealized so far. And you know, I would include things like food deserts and the like and lack of access to nutritional foods. And as you note, the violence associated with just simply being a person who identifies as another race, subject not only from police, but also fellow citizens. So I don't have problems with it. I don't want to leave it the thought that perhaps that this is, you know, this is the fait accompli. And so, I mean, this is part of the problem is, once you pull the thread on that sweater, it starts to unravel. So we start to get a burgeoning document that runs the risk of becoming, you know... I, yeah, that said, I don't have a problem with it. I'm just saying that there's a point at which we basically, the resolution makes, actually does, in point of fact, as some people criticize, make broad statements and declarations. And as councillor Jarrett's pointed out, it actually is a document that can be held up. And these resolutions frequently are held up to us in accounts when we actually are crafting laws. So in that respect, I just want to caution all of us because it seems that we're all on the same page as far as this goes. I'm pretty confident this will survive another unanimous vote. And I don't think anyone's disagreeing with it. It's just that I just want to caution us as we add to this because essentially, the spirit, what we're transmitting is a spirit in a sense, which for many people is considered inadequate, I'm sure. But, and I think what you're proposing actually reflects the fact that what prompts this, that we do understand, at least to some degree, in this not-so-deep degree, we understand the conditions that exist and our complicity in it. So yeah, so as I stumbled through that, I basically, I'm in favor of the resolutions. I just, I think that's good. I think we should put a period at the end of the convention.
I, as another sponsor, I would concur with what councillor Dwight just said. While perhaps the language we had maybe was deemed as too succinct or concise, it was meant to be all-encompassing and global about the issue. And I would be concerned about leaving the impression that we were leaving out the countless ways that racism does affect people's health. Other comments? I hear, I hear noise. But I can't determine what's happening. Okay, I think I see councillor Mayori and councillor Thorpe, was that a hand?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to councillor Thorpe, then councillor Mayori. And then I may have seen another, I'm not sure.
It was going to be quick. I was just going to say, I agree with councillor Dwight and what you just had to say. So I appreciate councillor Mayori providing this and wanting to add this amendment to the resolution. So, thank you.
Okay, councillor Mayori and then councillor Foster, did I see a hand? No, okay, councillor Mayori.
Right. So I guess, I actually was thinking that it kind of went with the be it further resolved that there in the resolution. Because they go on to talk about health equity in a general sense. And I think in the whereas section, if we're only talking about police violence, we're kind of missing the whole idea, like the bigger idea of health equity. Perhaps it could be not as detailed or something. I just wanted to get at the idea that there's health inequities that aren't...
You stopped talking. We can't hear you anymore. Councillor Mayori? Can't hear you. I just muted you, but unmute yourself and see if that fixes it.
Apologies, you didn't hear anything I said, right?
Right.
Okay.
Some of it we didn't hear.
I'm, I apologize, apologies. I just was saying that part of why I wanted to add this, and I could make it shorter, was really because of in the be it further resolved that section, we're talking a lot about health equity and health inequities. And because in the whereas, we're only talking about police violence, I felt like it rounded it out for the section of objectives in the be it further resolved. Because you talk about health equity, I feel like you need to, it needs to be mentioned. Other, you know, the whole, kind of some range, and it doesn't have to be as detailed as the one I provided, some range of the health inequities that are racism-based, besides just police violence. Yes, I mean, that's what the APH changed.
I opened my own resolution, so I don't, I can't respond. Councillor Dwight?
I just want to note that the title actually is not specific to police actions, but it is to, you know, the actions at the federal, state, and local level to combat the public health crisis of systemic racism. So it is, it is relative to systemic racism. It is, it is one of many whereas's. But I take your point. I mean, I don't, as I said, I don't have a, actually, my caution is not to deny this amendment, it's just to simply say, maybe this is the point at which we put a period. That's all, that we don't have to expand it beyond this. I think, one, that even the discussion of the need for the resolution was critical and in fact, way past due, at least after the most recent actions that have resulted in ongoing demonstrations and outcry. And so, you know, this is something that has been massaged and reviewed and reconsidered as, as conditions literally on the ground change daily. And so, at some point, it is just my hope that we move this forward and then we get on to the part where we actually do the work that demonstrates the commitments that we're making here.
All right. I'm looking for other hands. Okay, any further discussion on this? This or these two amendments? This amendment comprised of two sections, I believe? Can't see it, that's my recollection.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Seeing none, roll call please on the amendment, Laura.
Councillor Mayori.
Yes.
Councillor Nash.
Oh. Okay.
Councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
Councillor Dwight. Councillor Foster.
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
And councillor Labarge.
Yes.
Okay. Councillor Jarrett.
So there is another section that I would like to propose for discussion. And I'm happy to read that. Laura's bringing that up. There it is. So after the paragraph about strongly agreeing that racism is a public health crisis, be it further resolved that, "The Northampton City Council considers systemic changes that are within our power and advocate for those which are not, including but not limited to a shifting of municipal resources from punitive approaches to public safety, so supportive and restorative ones, changes to the tax structure to help build wealth among those who have been discriminated against, updating zoning codes, housing laws, and transportation systems to create more affordable housing and accessible jobs and to ensure equal access to healthcare." So I made a motion.
I'll second.
Motion's ammended and seconded.
And if I could explain?
Sure.
So I want us to hold a view of the structural changes that are needed to actually solve the problems of racism. I don't know what all of those are. And it's, you know, councillor Dwight's point about how we can't be entirely comprehensive here. But it is a start of a list from the reading and the listening that I've done. And, you know, some of these, the council has the power to enact, some the executive branch, and many, you know, only on a state or federal level. I think, you know, one of the tasks of the Policing Review Commission is to figure out how, specifically in Northampton, we can look at moving from punitive approaches to public safety to supportive and restorative ones. And then, you know, racism has created wealth inequality and things like a progressive tax structure will work to change that. I think reparations will be necessary as well. So then, our local codes contribute to the situation where people are priced out of Northampton. And looking at, you know, housing laws and accessibility, people who have no other option than being a tenant means they don't have the opportunity to build wealth. And instead, that wealth is transferred to property owners. And then, when I referred to transportation, you know, if you have a long commute by car or an inefficient one by public transit to get to work, to shop, to recreation, to access healthcare, that creates further inequality. You know, there are many more. But I think this amendment adds important examples of systemic change that we can hold in our minds as we're considering, as we're doing our jobs.
Councillor Dwight.
I have no problem supporting this amendment, insofar as that it is as described. This actually charts actions and appropriate actions that I have no problem supporting and in fact, actually have supported essentially the gist of what councillor Jarrett has described throughout my tenure. And it's true, this is actually, I'm actually grateful for this because it distills down to a more essential description of the issues that are at hand as well. And I'm grateful that you make a point of, a very appropriate point, pointing out that there are things that are within our realm of affecting and then there are clearly things that are not. And so at that point, we go from having the authority to basically having the influence. We have the opportunity for, by being elected officials in the municipality, we actually have, our voices are amplified for advocacy, probably above many average citizens. This embodies that, I'm grateful for it. I appreciate the introduction of the asylum.
Other comments? Okay. Seeing none, Laura, roll call please on that amendment?
Councillor Nash.
Yes.
Councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councillor Labarge.
Yes.
And councillor Mayori.
Yes.
That amendment passes. Further discussion on this resolution? Okay, seeing none, Laura, roll call please on second reading as amended.
Councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councillor Labarge. Councillor Mayori.
Yes.
And councillor Nash.
Yes.
Okay, that resolution passes. Moving on, next is 20.112, a resolution in support of an act improving outdoor lighting and increased dark sky visibility. I am going to ask, I'm going to invite one of the sponsors to read it because I can't instead of reading it like this, would one of the sponsors like to read it?
I'd be glad to.
Thank you.
Hi. Resolution 20.112, a resolution in support of an act improving outdoor lighting and increasing dark sky visibility. Whereas, more than two decades of scientific studies demonstrate a strong link between excessive light at night and serious human health risks, including elevated rates of breast and prostate cancer, melatonin suppression, sleep disruption, diabetes, obesity, and depression. And whereas, a 2016 report by the American Medical Association concludes that glare and excessive light from LEDs at night, especially light bluer than 3,000 CCTV, are harmful both to human health and wildlife. And whereas, the Federal Highway Administration states in a 2012 report, "The disability glare is one of the most important elements to control in a lighting system. It affects your ability to adequately see, particularly for older drivers." And whereas, virtually all species of animal studied scientifically included birds, mammals, insects, amphibians, fish, and coral are negatively affected by light pollution. And whereas, the city of Northampton supports the development of foraging areas and habitat for pollinating insects, which according to a 2017 scientific study, "make 62% fewer visits to flowers in the presence of light pollution." And whereas, "an estimated 100 million to 1 billion birds die in the US every year due to light pollution," according to a 2019 scientific study. And whereas, "light pollution causes the night sky to be at least six to 10 times brighter than naturally dark skies in the city of Northampton and as much as 50 times brighter in some other parts of Massachusetts." And whereas, "light pollution," as measured in the 2017 scientific study, "is growing worse at 2% per year globally and up to 10% per year in some parts of Massachusetts, many times faster than population growth." And whereas, "light pollution represents wasted energy and resources since light that shines into the sky or is brighter than muted provides no benefit." And whereas, "the city of Northampton is committed to reducing greenhouse gas emissions as demonstrated by its Sustainable Northampton Comprehensive Plan, its Office of Planning and Sustainability, its Energy and Sustainability Commission, and its five-star community rating, and has written dark sky standards into municipal building codes." And whereas, "curbing light pollution at night by installing only well-shielded, appropriately bright, warm-colored lighting will cost cities and towns of Massachusetts no more than installing poorly shielded, excessively bright, and blue lighting and will use less electrical power." And whereas, "the starry sky in the Milky Way have led countless generations to ponder profound questions about the universe, to incorporate planets, sun, and moon into their religions, and to create innumerable..." religions, and to create innumerable works of art and literature. And the ability to see a naturally dark starry sky is a human right, as filed by the U.S. National Park Service, the International Dark Sky Association, the United Nations, and other national and world organizations. And whereas, the identical bills H.2858 and S.1937 enact improving outdoor lighting and increase in dark sky visibility, were to a regulate state and municipally funded outdoor lighting projects, have been reported favorably by the Joint Telecommunications Utilities and Energy Committee of the Massachusetts Legislature. And whereas, H.2858 and S.1937 have been cosponsored by over 25 state senators and representatives, and endorsed by the Appalachian Mountain Club, Massatabon, the Massachusetts Sierra Club, and the Massachusetts Medical Society. Whereas, the Massachusetts Medical Association has endorsed virtually identical principles to those in H.2858 and S.1937. And whereas, every New England state except Massachusetts has passed some form of legislation or regulation of light pollution. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Northampton urges the General Court of Massachusetts and Governor Charles Baker to enact the state law curbing light pollution and protecting the Commonwealth of Massachusetts' naturally dark skies. Be it further resolved that the administrative assistant to the City Council shall send a copy of this resolution to Governor Charles Baker, House Speaker Robert DeLeo, Senate President Karen Spilka, Senator Michael Rodriguez, Chair of Senate Ways and Means Committee, the presenters of the bill, Senator Cynthia Cream, and Representative Sean Garbely, and Representative Lindsay Sabodosa, and Senator Joe Comfort.
Move approval?
I can.
Thank you for reading that. Motion was made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Thorpe, I believe?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. Um, discussion. Would one of the sponsors like to speak? Counselor Mayori?
I'll attempt it. I was just gonna say, yeah, I just, you know, this resolution is in support of statewide legislation, but I want to take this moment to commend the council and the counselors in Northampton who introduced light pollution legislation in Northampton, basically from 2006 on. And a big thanks also to James Lowenthal and the Northampton City Lights for this kind of continued, important resident expert work that they're doing. We're very fortunate to have them in our community advocating for this.
Oh no, we lost you. Hold on. We lost you. Counselor Mayori? You can't, I can't hear you.
No, I can't either.
Can you hear me?
No.
Darn it, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, I'll just stop talking after this one. I, you didn't hear any, okay, I just was gonna, I just wanted to commend the council. What?
We heard a lot.
Oh, okay. Well, let you, well, consider yourself, you know, Rachel, then you got it, and I'll just leave it at that. I think you heard, if you heard some of it, it wasn't very long, so you probably heard it all. But I just think this is an important, I, I wanted to thank James Lowenthal and to just emphasize this is also about energy over consumption, and about our physical and mental health and the well-being of our natural world. Yes, okay.
Uh, other sponsor, Counselor Jarrett.
Thank you. First, just point out the Scrivener's error in the third to last whereas, there's a T before the Massachusetts Sierra Club, and there might not be a space, I can't quite tell, between the and Massachusetts, so.
Correct.
Yeah. Minor. But, um, yeah, just thanks to the cosponsors and James Lowenthal and Northampton City Lights. And for me, light pollution has been a creeping change. I think the increase has been gradual enough that I don't notice it until I actually traveled to a place where you can really see the night sky. And then I remember that as a child in the eighties, you know, how much of the sky that I could really see. So this is an opportunity to support state legislation that will affect all future state and municipal operations and improve our collective health and, and that of the natural world. So I ask you all to support it. Thank you.
Counselor Foster.
And I would just like to echo the comments from Counselors Mayori and Jarrett, and again, extend my thanks to James Lowenthal and Northampton City Lights. And also, just echo that, that the more I've learned regarding the human and natural world impacts of light pollution, you know, I, I think that this, these bills that are moving forward, I know Northampton has already made steps to reduce light pollution in our city, and we know that there's more steps we can take, and that these bills moving forward will really help to consider the, the natural world and human impacts of light pollution. And similarly, I urge my fellow counselors to support it.
Okay, thank you. Counselor LaBarge.
I'm gonna support this. I, I have to, and I want to commend James Lowenthal for all the hard work that he has been putting into about the lights and the situations occurring on his street for a long period of time. And this needs to be done. You know, when I look at the first paragraph, which I talked with a couple of people about this yesterday, it reminded us about Ward Six and Francis Crowe was right there with me and my residents big time backing it, was the smell of the landfill and many, many people being sick. And when I look here and see, and them talk about the breasts and the cancer right down the line, which was similar symptoms for many, many men with prostate cancer and also breast cancer and tumors of the brain. So I agree with this. If you drive, and they say, you know, well, it depends on your age, I don't agree with that kind of a comment. But blue lights are awful, and I, you know, I have many of my friends who complain about it, and they're not in their sixties or fifties, they're younger, and they complain about those big bright blue lights. People driving in the big monstrous yellow ones are terrible. And I just think, I'm looking at this, I think it needs to be done. I'm gonna support this. It's something here that I think our city has been working very well with James Lowenthal. Also, we have Chris Mason, he's worked tirelessly with his group. And this is absolutely necessary. So thank you to the sponsors.
Thank you. Other Counselor Quinlan.
Thanks very much, and thank you to the sponsors and Dr. Lowenthal. When, when we were contacted during the campaign season and presented with a questionnaire regarding these concerns, you know, it was really, like, you know, very similar feeling to Counselor Jarrett that, you know, although I wasn't, I wasn't thinking about my childhood in the eighties, it was a little earlier than that, but I was pressed into thinking that, you know, it is, it is brighter here. And even when I, when I look out on the, the front door of my house, the stretch from the Northampton Nursing Home to the top of the hill, there's a number of streetlights there, and it's a straight, it's a straight shot, you know, it's a straightaway there. And I would note that, while I understand streetlights are there because there's pedestrians and, and cyclists as well, you drive down Route 91 from here to Holyoke, you don't see a streetlight, and you're going a heck of a lot faster. Well, maybe not that much, but a heck of a lot faster than you're going out in front of my house. So do we need it all? Do we need it all? I don't know. But I, I guess basically in short, my feelings are simply that if we can do something to make the situation better, we should, we should try anyways. And, and in short, I support this resolution. Thank you.
Other comments? I also just want to add my appreciation to, uh, to the sponsors, but also to the residents who, who I've met with and who worked tirelessly on this issue, some of whom were spoken public comments tonight, but who are just, are, are committed, and we thank you for your, your continued pushing on this. Um, okay, no further comments? Roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
And Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in first reading. Moving on, 20.113 has been withdrawn by the sponsors. So moving on to 20.116, a resolution recognizing the importance of the 2020 census. Actually, I have this because it's my resolution, so I can read it. In the year 2020, upon the recommendation of Counselor Jean-Louis Shara and Counselor Alex Jarrett, our 20.116, a resolution recognizing the importance of the 2020 census and encouraging residents of the city of Northampton to promote and complete the census to ensure a fair and complete count. Yet resolved by the City Council of the city of Northampton, the City Council's symbol does follows, whereas the U.S. Census Bureau is required by the U.S. Constitution to conduct a count of the population every 10 years, and this count provides a historic opportunity to help shape the foundation of our society and play an active role in American democracy. Whereas, the city of Northampton is committed to ensuring every resident is counted. Whereas, the city of Northampton includes hard-to-count communities, which are those that face barriers to full and equitable representation in the data collection process, and that historically have been undercounted. Whereas, the federal government recently decreased the time for non-response follow-up to the census by a crucial month, and instituted a new deadline of September 30th, 2020, endangering a complete count. Whereas, this reduction of time is another attempt to impede the complete count by the executive branch, as the former director of the Census Bureau, Kenneth Pruitt, testified in an emergency congressional hearing on July 25th, 2020, that quote, "With approximately a third of the population still to be counted, the president is sending a powerful signal that the 2020 census is a partisan tool greatly complicating the task of a census still in the field," end quote. Whereas, this reduction of time is also coming in a census year with extraordinary challenges for the door-to-door census operation due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and because of fear of divulging personal information and distrust of the federal government in the current political climate. Whereas, despite the fear engendered and stoked by the political climate, it is completely safe to respond to the census. The information collected by the census is confidential. Title 13 of the U.S. Code prohibits the Census Bureau from releasing any identifiable information about individuals, households, or businesses. The information can only be used for statistics and by law cannot be used against someone. Whereas, census data plays an important role in the allocation of federal and state funding to state and local communities, including funds for school lunch programs, education grants, and other child welfare programs, housing funds such as Section 8 vouchers, SNAP benefits, transportation funding for highways, health benefits like Medicare Part B, and others. Whereas, census data helps determine how many seats each state will have in the U.S. House of Representatives, and is necessary for an accurate and fair redistricting of state legislative seats, county and city councils, and voting districts. Whereas, information from the 2020 census and American Community Survey are vital tools for economic development and increased employment. Whereas, a united voice from business, government, community-based, and faith-based organizations, educators, media, and others will enable the 2020 census message to reach more of our residents. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Northampton is committed to partnering with the U.S. Census Bureau and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to achieve a complete and accurate count of all persons within our borders. Be it further resolved that the city of Northampton supports the goals and ideals for the 2020 census, and has and will disseminate 2020 census information, and encourages all residents to fill out the 2020 census before September 30th, 2020. Be it further resolved that the city of Northampton supports partnership specialists, census takers, and other U.S. Census Bureau staff as they help our community complete an accurate count. Be it further resolved that the Northampton City Council encourages all residents to safely participate in events and initiatives that will raise the overall awareness of the 2020 census and increase participation. Be it further resolved that the Northampton City Council encourages all Northampton residents to engage in conversations about the 2020 census with people they are close to, listen to any of their concerns, and share information about its importance and safety. Okay. Is there?
Uh, move approval, please.
A motion was made by Counselor Dwight, and I believe seconded by Counselor Nash. No, not, yes, Nash?
I think so.
That's right. Um, I, I, if, if you don't mind, I'll just lead off. And first, I want to thank my co-sponsor, Counselor Jarrett, who's been working on this issue as the council appointee to the Complete Count Committee since January, I believe. I also want to thank Javier Lego Corrido of the ACLU of Massachusetts for bringing this to us and asking, asking us to get involved and to fight for the census. With so much happening in this country right now, and the constant fire hose that is this current administration, it's easy to forget that this decade census has had roadblocks and efforts to thwart it basically since the president took office. It's an act of resistance to fight for the census at this point, and to work to make sure that everyone is counted, to, and to acknowledge the mistrust, and also counteract it with the facts and about the safety of the census. As the resolution touches upon, it's crucial for Northampton and all communities to have a complete count. There is so much crucial funding that depends on each individual person being accounted for. So I urge the council to not only support this resolution, but to commit to doing what we can in the next 27 days, there are just 27 days left to do this, to, and I want us all to be out there and informing and encouraging people, and asking them to complete the census on their own, or to please respond if they are contacted. Please, let's all do that work and, and ensure those that are rightly frightened that this is a safe thing for them to do, and a beneficial thing for them and for our whole community to do. So, thank you. Counselor Jarrett.
Thank you, Counselor Shara, and also to Javier Lego Corrido, who helped write it. And I think, you know, the resolution says, speaks to all these points. I would just add an emphasis to the last point to, to ask people you know about the census, take the time to listen to their concerns and, and share information. I think that personal contact might move people who haven't felt comfortable responding yet. And as, as Counselor Shara said, you know, we're up against an administration that is using this as a political tool, and our engagement is a way we can fight back. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Counselor Mayori, you're, you're muted.
Yeah, I just really want to thank you all. I'm so proud that the council's bringing this forward, and thank you to Javier. I, this is such a, a simple, not easy, but simple and very practical thing we can do for not only our community, but for equity in our community. It's just, I, I, I've always loved the census because of that, because it's, the goal is so clear and direct, and because it is so impactful. So thank you for doing this.
Counselor Foster.
Similarly, thank you to the sponsors and for Javier from ACLU for, for bringing this forward. I think one of the hardest things that I see is a sort of reflexive mistrust in government, and given our current federal political climate, I understand why, and I understand why people would mistrust the census, and yet also, it's so important to communicate the, as Counselor Mayori pointed out, the equity issue, the funding issues, and representation, and all of the very real impacts that the census has. And, you know, I thank you for bringing this forward, and, you know, we'll look forward to over the next 27 days, helping to spread the word to make sure that, that people understand why they're filling out the census and that it is safe to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Nash.
Hello. So first, I want to thank Counselor Jarrett for all of his work, because he's been, he was our designee back in January, and he's done a good job of keeping a surprise of what's going on here, and I appreciate the sponsors pulling together this resolution to alert us as to it's time to act. So I, as a counselor, I'm, I'm asking the sponsors, other than, you know, like using my email list as a counselor, or, you know, my social media stuff, what other things can I be doing to assist census staff in, in, around outreach?
I'll invite Counselor Jarrett to, to answer that, since you have been working on this.
Sure, yeah. So making connections, you know, if you have communities in your ward that are hard to count, as, as, you know, some of the, as we've heard, you know, elderly. communities in your ward that are hard to count, as you know, some of the, as we've heard, you know, elderly, people of color, low-income people, those are groups that historically end up being undercounted. So make connections with, you know, the Housing Authority properties, the, anywhere that you can, you can help people get that message across. I don't know if, you know, if any of the, any of the, what are they called, enumerators, are having any issues in North Hampton. I haven't heard about that specifically, but I know I ran into one and gave them directions, so I was very happy to help out in that small way. So those are, you know, besides sharing it widely, those are some ideas.
Um, so I would, I would like to move to recognize Javier Lego Corrido, who I think could add, maybe give you some more information as well.
Excellent.
Second.
Okay, hold on one second, Javier. We need a roll call on recognizing Javier.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
So Labarge?
I said yes.
Okay.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
And Counselor Shara.
Yes. Okay.
Thanks for the opportunity to address the City Council again. To answer in Counselor Nash's question, in order to add information to what Counselor Jarrett has said, the core of the problem right now is that we have been working really hard in coalition with the Paranavale Complete Count Committee, with MIRA and other organizations, to have all these hard-to-count communities counted. So far, we have been able to do a huge amount of work in relationship to that. But with the constant fight of the federal government, in this, in this last month, we are absolutely reaching out to the hardest of the hardest. And that's, that's, that's one of the things that I want to stress. One of the things that the City Council can do and the city can do is to be proactive, putting information more than ever in different languages. If the City Council members want to start sharing on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, information in different languages, that would be incredibly useful. On top of that, making clear about Title thirteen that protects the information that is acquired by the census to be able to have a full count. That's extremely important. I would say too that being able to have the City Council passing this tonight could mean a lot for the community because nowadays our community needs reassurance that this is something that needs to happen, this is something that's safe and something that actually is going to have a positive impact in their community. If anybody wants to get in touch with me, I have, like, probably Counselor Jarrett has a ton of material, a lot of material in different languages, and I would be willing to work with anybody in the City Council to make that happen. Thank you so much.
Very much. Counselor Dwight.
What Javier points out, and I think it's one of the strongest points to hit, particularly for the groups that are more inclined to try and avoid participating in the census is Title thirteen protections and citing the Title thirteen protections. I mean, part of, I mean, is he has said that the, many of the groups are, that are most vulnerable, the undocumented groups, and this is the groups that the president, of course, and his overt expression of racism and bigotry has been trying to exclude from the census, has been also trying to exclude from having a voice or even the protections and powers that currently the federal government provides and particularly this community provides. So I think it's, it's really important as you approach people to start with that, open with that, that how critically important is and how you are protected. You are not, you are not putting yourself in jeopardy for deportation or harassment or arrest or anything else because those, that is not information that is shared with any agency other than the Census Bureau. So I think that's, I mean, obviously the people are probably most trepidatious about responding would be, that would be their primary concern in every instance.
Thank you. Any further comments? Counselor Jarrett.
Yeah, I just that those resources are freely available also on the census.gov website. I just did a search for twenty twenty census resources and you'll find many documents in different languages to share.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
That, Counselor Dwight.
Would you entertain the thought of having two readings to expedite this, given the short amount of time that you've described?
Thank you for asking, so I didn't have to ask myself.
I will move to suspend the rules to allow for a second reading.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded to suspend rules. Any discussion on suspension of rules? Roll call, please, on suspension of rules, please.
Okay, Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
We're having a very hard time hearing you, Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight.
Yes, and move second reading, please.
Second.
Motion was made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Nash for second reading. Any discussion on second reading? Hearing none, roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
And Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, that passes in two readings. Get out there and get everyone to respond to the census. Thank you very much. Thank you, Javier.
President Shara.
Yes.
President Shara, I'd just like to take an opportunity to explain the withdrawal of item twenty one thirteen for people who actually have been sitting and maybe have some concerns about that. And that was, it was.
Hold on one second. Counselor Jarrett, do you feel like before that explanation happens, you need to speak?
Yes.
Okay, Counselor, sorry, I hate to interrupt you, Counselor Dwight, but like, and then you can give an explanation.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you. So I've spoken with a city solicitor and he has advised me to recuse myself on this upcoming ordinance due to a potential financial impact, negative or positive, to my business peddlepeople. So I'm going to recuse myself on the explanation of the withdrawal of the resolution. And I'll just say.
We just lost you.
Oh.
We can't hear you.
What's happening?
You've refused yourself. He's gone.
The internet recused him.
Yeah.
The center will not hold. All right, well, if I could just briefly speak, this was the resolution to support the plastic reduction and sustainability ordinance. And the reason the sponsors have requested a withdrawal is it presumes an outcome on the vote on the ordinance. So the ordinance will come up and that is not being withdrawn, it's just the resolution will be rescinded at such a time when and if the ordinance should pass or any version of that. It's just that it presupposed something that we were not entitled to presuppose. And that's why we chose to withdraw it.
Okay, thank you for that explanation, Counselor Jarrett. You may return. Hopefully you can return. And we are moving on to the consent agenda. I will read the titles of the items and then ask if there are any removals for discussion because there's no discussion on the consent agenda. Okay, first up is minutes of June tenth, twenty twenty, and June twenty-third, twenty twenty, the June twenty-third, twenty twenty. I guess they're both special meetings, so the minutes of both of those special meetings. And next is approving twenty point zero seven nine, twenty point zero eight two, and twenty point one oh eight National Grid Verizon poll petitions for King Street, Summer Street, and Finn Street. Petition numbers two four eight eight one, two four six dash three, two four eight eight one, two four six dash four, and two four eight nine, one two four six dash five. National Grid must obtain an excavation trench permit issued by the city of North Hampton prior to construction. There are no conflicts with public utilities at the proposed location for number one, number two, number twenty-six, number thirty-nine, and number forty. And we went through those documents under the public hearing. Next is approve twenty point zero eight zero and twenty point zero eight one National Grid Verizon New England poll petitions for King Street with conditions recommended by the DPW. These are petition numbers two four eight eight one, two four six dash one, and two four eight eight one, two four six dash two. The DPW has recommended the following conditions for poll number two as shown on the plan attached to petition two four eight eight one, two four six dash one, and poll number thirty-one is shown on plan attached to petition two four eight eight one, two four six dash two due to potential conflicts with the sewer and a water service respectively. Caution should be exercised while excavating at these locations. The hole for the new pole location shall be inspected by the DPW prior to actual pole installation. Twenty-four hours notice to the DPW is required by calling four one three five eight seven one five seven oh. If the sewer and our water service is disturbed, it must be repaired or relocated by the contractor at the direction of the city engineer. National Grid must obtain an excavation trench permit issued by the city of North Hampton prior to construction. There are no conflicts with public utilities at the proposed locations for number twenty-one, number twenty, number twenty-eight dash fifty, and number thirty-three. Again, those documents are under the public hearing. Next is twenty point one one seven Appointment to the Arts Council. This is for referral to the City Services Committee. This is Michael Abatziello at one sixty-one Main Street, Leeds. This is a term from September twenty twenty to June twenty twenty-three, and this is to fill a vacancy.
Move approval.
Okay, no removals. Then the motion's been made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Labarge for approval on the consent agenda. There's no discussion, so roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, no, he's not, I'm sorry.
There you go.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Okay, good. Okay, we are now going to recess for the Committee on Finance.
Counselor Shara?
Yes, Counselor Quinlan.
Do you have a recess recess for a minute or two?
We can recess before we recess. Would you like to recess?
That would be great.
Okay, we shall.
Recession.
How about a seven-minute recess? So, how about, it's nine fifty-four, how about, let's be back here at ten o'clock.
All right, thank you.
It's a date.
That's a five-minute recess.
Eddie, if you are. Because we are all back. Um. So let me just make sure, Liz, are you all good? Uh, yeah, we're live again. Okay, great, thank you. Um, okay, so we are recessing into the Finance Committee. Um, Laura, will you please take the role of Finance?
Councilor, um, Shara.
Here.
Councilor Thorpe.
Here.
Councilor Quinlan.
Here.
And Councilor LaBarge.
Here.
Okay, we are here. Um, first item is approval of the minutes from our previous meeting, which was August 20th, 2020.
And I apologize, as I actually wasn't able to finish describing them in time.
I see, they're not there, okay. Um, so then our only item is the financial order 20.111, in order to accept land and surplus it for affordable housing at Laurel Street and Burt's Pit Road. The process note is the legislation cited in the orders on the governor's desk waiting for a signature. Once signed, the sponsor will want a minor amendment to provide the final citation. Um, so this is one of these home rule petitions that, um, is now, I guess, waiting for the governor. Um, let me, yeah, Laura, if you, I still.
Trying to load.
I restarted my computer hoping it would fix the issue, and it did not. Um, so, uh, hopefully you can load it, and then I'm going to read it in little bitty words on the screen.
It's slowly loading.
Yeah, I don't know what's up, but you're having much better luck than I am.
There we are.
Okay. Just any way you can make that larger, I would be forever grateful, but I'm going to get like right in on there. Um, okay, in the City Council, April 2nd, today's the 3rd, um, 2020, upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Norquants and Planning Sustainability, 20.111, in order to accept land and surplus it for affordable housing at Laurel Street and Burt's Pit Road. Whereas successive legislation, legislation, Chapter 86 of the Acts of 1994, Chapter 241 of the Acts of 2016, and House 4123, 2020, awaiting the governor's signature, has set aside lots on Laurel Street and Burt's Pit Road for affordable housing to transfer the land to the City of Northampton and to waive consideration respectively. Whereas consistent with the city's Sustainable Northampton Comprehensive Plan Housing Needs Assessment and Fair Housing Plans, the city has planned since 1994 for this land to be used for affordable housing. Whereas City Council has consistently endorsed this use of land, petitioning the state legislature for these pieces of legislation, and most recently zoning Laurel Street parcels as part of the Smart Growth Overlay on April 2nd, 2020. Order that the mayor is authorized to accept said deed to the above referenced land approximately 3.4 acres in aggregate at 23 Laurel Street and 278 Burt's Pit Road. Further, that City Council declares the parcels surplus to city needs. Further, that the mayor is authorized to transfer deeds to the land subject to the city retaining affordable housing restriction. Further, to the extent consistent with authorizing legislation, the mayor is authorized to adjust parcel boundaries with neighboring properties such that the final land dedicated to affordable housing is no less than the current lot configuration. Um, I need a motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
This is made and seconded, Mayor Norquants.
Yes, so, um, this has been a long, uh, process to get to this point. By way of background, when the state, uh, North Hampton State Hospital, uh, closed, and there was legislation essentially, uh, sort of decommissioning it, um, a series of parcels were basically dispersed under those Acts of 1994 for various purposes, um, including the community gardens, you know, to the, and to the recreation department, and, you know, agricultural lands to Smith-Vogue. Um, and there were several parcels that were actually designated to go to the North Hampton Housing Authority to be redeveloped, uh, for affordable housing. The, and there was given a time certain that they needed to do that by. The Housing Authority was able to develop some of the parcels that it had been deeded. Um, some of you may know the Mary McCollgan House, uh, uh, on Grove Street. It's actually just around the corner from one of these parcels on Laurel. Um, but for whatever, well, basically due to lack of funding from the state, was never able to actually develop these two parcels, uh, for affordable housing. And actually, the, the legislation told. So we began a process back in 2015, uh, or so, um, asking first the North Hampton Housing Authority to declare that they couldn't, weren't able to, uh, develop the property. And then we actually came to the council back then, um, and got a home rule petition to basically seek an amendment to the 1994 legislation. Basically, instead of giving these parcels to, uh, the Housing Authority to develop as affordable housing, to transfer them to the city, uh, to develop as affordable housing. The initial legislation that's referenced in your order, um, was adopted, um, but there was a glitch in the legislation somehow between the House and the Senate. And, um, basically, the language about no consideration, meaning that the city would not have to pay market rate for the parcels, um, got omitted. Um, so then we began a process of trying to then re-amend, um, the legislation. Um, and in the process, uh, there we, you know that we lost both our state rep and our state senator, and we're, and went about a year without, um, either. Um, so it then got carried over into the most current session, um, where we've been working with, uh, Rep Sabidosa and Senator Commerford to finally get this legislation over the finish line, um, which we almost have, it is literally sitting on the governor's desk right now. Um, it's passed the House and the Senate, and, uh, the corrective, it's basically corrective language to what was adopted in 2016. Um, and it basically says that the, these two parcels will be transferred to the City of Northampton. Um, they must be developed for affordable housing, um, and they'll be transferred for no consideration. Um, and the governor has until, I believe, the, um, the sixth to sign, uh, the legislation, so we expect that to happen. So what this is doing is, um, anticipating that that will happen, um, and basically, uh, anticipating that it will be transferred to us, and basically the council is authorizing, uh, that the land will be surplus, um, to city uses, and that we will then begin a process of, um, being able to, uh, uh, move it into affordable housing for no consideration. So, um, you mentioned the need to potentially amend this, it's true, once the governor signs it, um, which hasn't happened yet, um, but should happen between now and second reading, um, there will be an actual, you know, Acts of, uh, 2020, uh, and a, and a, and a number assigned to it, so we could then amend and fill that in on second reading. But we'd like to get a first reading in anticipation of him signing it, um, and be really ready to go, um, because we've really wanted to get these parcels, um, into production. Um, some of you know, uh, there used to be an old structure on the house on Laurel Street, uh, which actually the city used some of its CDBG monies a few years ago to take down because it was a hazard. Um, and there's still a structure on the property on Burt's Pit Road, um, as well. So if you're driving, um, out on Burt's Pit Road and you kind of go up and around the curve, you have to really look now because it's overgrown, but there is a structure, um, in the woods, that's the other parcel in question. So, um, those two parcels, we would, uh, work with our, um, local affordable housing development community, um, to get those, um, converted into affordable housing. So that's basically what we're asking is for you to authorize the next steps in that process now that this, uh, amendment to the Acts of, uh, 1994 have been adopted.
Okay, thank you, Councilor LaBarge.
Yes, um. I tried today, Mayor. Coming up by Burt's Pit Road. Coming from Village Hill, I took Burt's Pit Road and that really nasty curve there.
Yep.
Find that house.
So right after you go past the Smith, um, Smith-Vogue has a sort of a farm area on the left as you're coming around the curve, um, where they, they used to have some greenhouses and they have some equipment there. Um, once you then basically get to the start of the tree line, after you go by that, um, it's there, it's just really overgrown, especially now. So you almost have to stop your car and, and get out and peer through because the, it's so overgrown with trees. But you'll see the house in there, it's got the red X's on all the, all the windows and doors are boarded up, and it's got the red X's on it. But it, it's harder to see now this time of year that there's a lot of, uh, growth, but it's there.
I know, we couldn't find it, and I had.
Yeah.
Couldn't find the house.
Yeah.
Question is, so with that parcel, because I'm for this 100%, it's probably going to be used for like an affordable duplex or something, what would they do with that?
Uh, well, that's, that's, you know, what we would be doing is, uh, putting out an, an RFP and working with, um, probably, um, you know, our, our, either, you know, folks like, you know, Valley CDC, or Habitat for Humanity, or, or, um, you know, one of the other affordable housing developers, um, to basically, um, you know, submit a proposal, um, and we would, um, you know, trans, transfer the property to them. We, we assured, one of the things that we assured, and I, um, gave it to them in testimony and in letters, that, you know, the city would not be making any kind of a profit on this. Um, where, that was not our goal, our goal was to basically, um, pick up where the legislation that was supposed to have this go to the Housing Authority, um, and have them turn it into affordable housing, that we were just going to carry out the actual mission of that legislation. So, um, so we don't, there's not an end user yet or an end design yet, but, um, that would be my assumption that we would be, um, you know, working with someone to, you know, one or two units of housing. Um, that would be, that would be part of the RFP process, and the same goes for Laurel Street.
Because if you look at the pattern that we're doing, like with Habitat and so forth, they're usually, um, like, two families and/or either for, for it to be more affordable for homeownership for couples today. So that was my question of just about that side area. Then we have on Laurel Street, which I think it's a piece of, uh, it's a denser property, they're looking at that today that we could probably put in something, a multifamily home on that one, too.
Yeah, I think that would all be part of the consideration in terms of looking at the lot size and looking at, um, you know, the existing neighborhood. Um, and so, yeah, that would, that would also be part of the consideration in, in the RFP process, trying to maximize what we could in terms of house, affordable housing production there.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please, Laura.
Councilor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councilor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councilor Shara.
Yes.
And Councilor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, that moves forward with a positive recommendation. Uh, there's no other business, so.
Move to adjourn, please. Second.
Motion made by Councilor Quinlan, seconded by Councilor Thorpe to adjourn. Roll call, please, on adjourning Finance, Laura.
Councilor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councilor Shara.
Yes.
Councilor Thorpe.
Yes.
And Councilor LaBarge.
Councilor LaBarge, we, uh, can you say that again?
Pardon?
We can't, we couldn't hear your answer.
Are you in favor of adjourning?
Yes.
Okay, I figured, but we got to, you know, get it in there. Um, okay, we are adjourned out of Finance and back into Council, and we are picking up that financial order we just discussed. So, this is 20.111, in order to accept land and surplus it for affordable housing at Laurel Street and Burt's Pit Road. This is on first reading.
Move approval, please.
Second it.
Seconded by Councilor LaBarge, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please, Laura.
Okay, Councilor Dwight.
Yes.
Councilor Foster.
Yes.
Councilor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councilor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councilor Mayori.
Yes.
Councilor Nash.
Yes.
Councilor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councilor Shara.
Yes.
And Councilor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in first reading, moving on to financial orders in second reading. 20.103, in order to award contract for FY 2021 to FY 2023 for audit, uh, to Scanlon and Associates.
Vote to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilor LaBarge, seconded by Councilor Dwight. Any discussion on the, uh, contract for the audit on second reading? Seeing none, roll call, please, Laura.
Councilor Foster.
Yes.
Councilor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councilor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councilor Mayori.
Yes.
Councilor Nash.
Yes.
Councilor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councilor Shara.
Yes.
Councilor Thorpe.
Yes.
And Councilor Dwight.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in second reading. Um, moving on to orders, this is 20.111, in order to waive the city's right of first refusal under American law 61 for land on Turkey Hill Road. First reading, and, ooh, it's working now, thank you, IT or whoever did that, thank you. Uh, in City Council, September 3rd, 2020, upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Norquants and Planning Sustainability, 20.10 zero, um, this number doesn't match the number on the agenda, so we'll figure out which is the correct number. In order waiving, um, uh, the city's right of first refusal under Mass General Law 61 for land on Turkey Hill Road, whereas the city holds a right of first refusal to purchase land on 13.1807 acres at 332 Turkey Hill Road, map ID 34-034, more particularly described in a deed recorded in the Hampshire County Registry of Deeds Book 11149, page 346, as part of a Chapter 61 lien. And whereas the city, through Planning Sustainability, helped create this parcel of land as part of the housing element in a limited conservation development that preserved a significant amount of land for the Mineral Hills Greenway Turkey Hill. Now therefore be it ordered, City Council authorizes the mayor to waive the city's right of first refusal pursuant to the provisions of General Law Chapter 61B.
Move approval, please.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilor Dwight, seconded by Councilor LaBarge. Uh, I can't see the people. So.
Sorry, here we go.
Okay. Um, Mayor Norquants, are you?
Yes, I'll be, um, speaking to this.
Okay.
Um, so essentially, when the city, um, uh, made a major land preservation, um, acquisition at Turkey Hill several years ago, um, it was a multi-element plan, and, um, essentially, uh, we would preserve 150 acres in the aforementioned Mineral Hills area. Um, we would create, uh, four condominiums, which have already been created as part of that project. Um, and then there would be one high-end home, uh, lot that would be part of the, um, part of the acquisition. Um, because we were doing this under, uh, uh, you know, Mass General Law and, um, open space acquisition, um, the city always has a built-in right of first refusal, um, when it comes time to, um, dispose of, of these kinds of properties. And so basically, we do not want to exercise our right of first refusal, and we basically want to follow the plan that had been initiated, and, um, and basically, um, sell this as a market rate lot, um, as part of the original outlined plan. So simply all we're asking the council to do is to affirm that the city would not buy the property itself, um, uh, but would waive its right of first refusal so that it can be sold.
Okay, Councilor LaBarge.
Yes, um, I know exactly the site that you're talking about, Mayor, and the condominiums, and also the other, um, two families across from that. When you come up Turkey Hill Road and you bear that luck, there's a When you come up Turkey Hill Road and you bear that luck, there's a whole empty field up there. And you can remember when we had open house up there, when we acquired all that property. That land there that you're talking about, is that a price at what, to be sold at a hundred and ninety nine thousand nine hundred, something like that? And that's under a, a chapter with lien on it, correct?
Yes.
On that for taxes?
I believe that is correct, Counselor.
Sixty one, correct?
Yes, indeed.
That's why we want to do this, is to release that and get back our money from that, correct?
Exactly, exactly. And also, it's not, it's not a parcel that the city, it's, it's too expensive a parcel that the city would acquire it. For open space. It's a, it's a developable parcel, so we wanna, you know, we've preserved a hundred and fifty acres, as you know. But we also try to balance that with creating housing and putting some of the property on, back on, you know, on the tax rolls and clearing up the tax debt. So.
Remember, Mayor, way back when we bought, got all that property? And there was some, I want to say some well-known football player. And his girlfriend lived in Long Meadow and they came to look at that property. He loved it, he wanted to build there, but she didn't like it because it was too rural and everybody was upset about that. But it's a beautiful piece of property there.
It is, and, and it'll be a great spot for a home and, and this will sort of complete the development plan that had been put in place. And I know that you worked very hard on with, with neighbors in Ward Six, particularly to. To preserve, you know, the open space for people to enjoy and recreate.
I'm going to support this.
Counselor Jarrett. So, are you?
Great, thanks for that, that explanation. So who owns that, the land now? It's not the city, right?
Now, Counselor Labarge, do you, do you happen to have that info?
They do not live here in Northampton. It is alone, owned by, I think, Chin and Banus.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to confirm, right, it was, it was a third party. The plan is for a, a high-end home, or that's most likely what it would be used for. Are there, is, what, it, it would not, I guess my question is, it would not work to build. Affordable housing or multi-unit, you know, similar to the condos that are near there on this lot. That's, it's just not financially feasible. Just thinking about continuing the. Rather than having another large, high-end home, could we support? Smaller units, multiple smaller units.
Again, all I can say is that the, there is, there was some affordable units created as part of this plan. And, and the cost of a lot and the value of a lot is prohibitive for. The, the goal for affordable housing. And again, this was part of the original plan, was a mix of market and affordable rate homes. So I believe that's not, it's not a property. Mr. Fiden could certainly address that in more detail, and I can get that for you on second reading. But, but that's, that's their current position.
Thank you.
It would be a two hundred thousand dollar just to buy the parcel itself, the land itself. So that would be a fairly capital-intensive investment. So that's, that's my understanding of the, of the project.
You're correct, Mayor, we do have the affordable housing, that all went in together within that area. We have one, two, three, four of them. And that one site plus the condominiums, which are a little bit higher than the affordable housing, but it's beautiful there.
Any other comments? Oh, Counselor Dwight?
Yeah, it's, it's worth noting that we need to do these balances on the, on the property acquisition. Because one, we took a substantial amount of property off the tax rolls. And in order to subsidize and create the ability to have the affordable housing, we need the, the market rate one. Actually helps offset the, the potential lost revenue. It's, it's, it's been part of the comprehensive plan, I mean, there's the give and take. And in so far as this property is, is. Is, would be. Very desirable for someone who's willing to. Make the investment just on the property alone, as we said, around two hundred thousand dollars. And then whatever it costs to build them a, a home on that site. So there, there is, there's a method to the madness, as it were. And it's been ongoing that, that when we, as Northampton acquires and preserves land for conservation. That we also want to make sure that we, we don't cut off our noses despite our face and lose potential revenue. And this, this is part of that plan. And it al- always has been.
Okay, any other comments? Roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes, got through it, that's excellent.
And Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in first reading. We are on to ordinances for referral. First is twenty point zero one five, an ordinance relative to metered parking on Pleasant Street. Some history, at the request of the DBW, the City Council referred the ordinance back to Transportation and Parking Commission. Excuse me, February sixth. So it's already been to transportation and parking. And now we need it to be referred to legislative matters or anywhere else you want it to go. This is your turn now.
I move to refer it to legislative matters.
Excellent.
Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded to refer this ordinance to legislative matters. Moving on to twenty point one one four, plastic reduc-, oh, plastic reduction and sustainability ordinance.
We have to vote on the referral.
Oh, my gosh, I'm so sorry. Roll call on referring.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe. Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
And Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Is thus referred, now we're up to twenty point one one four, plastic reduction and sustainability ordinance. Counselor Jarrett, did you want to speak?
Yes. Yes, I'm not sure how much you heard of that before Zoom crashed on me, but, before, but it's the same, I'll read the same thing. So the city solicitor has advised me to recuse myself on this ordinance. Due to a potential financial impact, maybe negative or positive to my business peddlepeople. So I'll recue, but, so, and I just wanted to make a note for my constituents. I encourage you to reach out to your two at-large counselors, Counselor Shara and Counselor Dwight. Who can represent you in this matter. So I'm going to stop my video, which is stepping away while this is discussed.
Okay. So now we need a motion. Before we discuss anything, we need a motion to refer. Counselor Nash, were you raising your hand to make?
I'll make a motion to refer to legislative matters and to community resources.
Motion's been made.
Your first second.
Made and seconded, Counselor Labarge, is this discussion on that?
Go to community resource first, then to legislative matters?
It has to.
Exactly.
Legislative matters has to be the last stop.
Okay, and then I would like to talk about that referral after, please.
That was the, what?
Yeah.
Counselor Dwight, yes, discussion.
I was gonna say, now is the time.
Yes, now is the time, yes, Counselor Labarge.
Oh, thank you. You know, we know this is a very big issue here. I'm for, about this ordinance, I believe in this ordinance. And a lot of work has been put into this by the Youth Commission and by the two counselors. And knowing what has happened with the COVID nineteen, and believe me, I've been talking with business owners and the same with my husband too. And there is a lot of anger out there right now, because many of them, more doors are going to be closing. I, I'm happy to see that, that this is going to community resource and then to legislative matters, which it has to go. But, you know, we need to look at, and I think Counselor Dwight, you were highly involved before, with the plastic bags. And I know for a fact, even talking with former Consular President at Large Jesse Adams. About how long and the research that they did on that ordinance. And the outreach they did. And what I'm asking for, that there be a massive outreach that needs to be done to the business community. Including, including the Chamber of Commerce, the Small Business Association. And there is a big problem there right now. And many, many individual businesses, ranging from small to large. And small retail businesses to large and small food markets. That way, the businesses have an opportunity to voice their concerns. Especially where so many of our businesses have been hit terrible of losing money. And having a hard time staying above water, and believe me, they are. Many will have to close their doors if added on more money to make this happen. I just feel this is such a bad time for everyone, for all of us, for all our businesses in our city. Many are angered right now of losing parking on Main Street, which we all know. As a city councilors, it is our responsibility to have this resolution go to the appropriate committees. With the right of all businesses to speak of their concern. And sometimes their voices to make a difference with language changed on a resolution. I have been asked today, what businesses have been reached out already? I'd like to know that, if it has been done. Because there was some confusion when I got calls yesterday about the resolution. And then having the ordinance, it was very confusing for people with that resolution. And it was too late to get a hold of Laura last night when I got in. Because I, I didn't know that the resolution needed to be pushed away, and it should have. And you could see where some of that confusion was, having a resolution approving that. And then having an ordinance that you're sending to a committee. So that's where there were some problems with that. But I am for a hundred percent, I agree with Amy Callahan, what she talked about today. I'm hearing it, I know it, I know business people. I do agree with a lot of language on this ordinance, believe me, I do.
We're not deliberating on the ordinance, I just want to be clear, this is a motion to refer.
This is what?
This is the motion to refer, so.
Yes, and I'm referring it, but I'm just saying, what I'm.
There's no deliberation, I just want to be clear. We're, there's no deliberation, we are just.
Okay, thank you. But I just want to say my feelings, hearing from business people, that their voices need to be heard and it's our job. It's our job to give them the opportunity, so thank you.
Any, Counselor Dwight?
I'm, I'm not sure if that was a proposal of any sort, and I couldn't really tell. So in, in, in the context of the referral, is that a proposal or are you asking for something?
Yes, it's a proposal.
For?
And I'm asking that we really do intensive research. And connecting with all the businesses in our city, from Florence to Leeds, right down the line. And that's our responsibility, Counselor, and you know that, and it's.
Counselor, if I may, the, the, actually, there was outreach done. In fact, actually, this process has been going on for two years and this discussion. And, no, let me finish, please.
Okay.
The, and so as such, I, I'm not opposed to, I think actually whatever does, whatever we can do to expand the community conversation about this, all the better, I'm for it. And, and you'll note that embedded in the language of this, of course. Is, was based on reactions and input from businesses. And, and, and I, I, I'm trying to be careful not to deliberate this any further. But if you're proposing. I don't know what you're proposing, because it will be going to these committees, you want it to be referred to somewhere else? Do you want to, are you proposing a forum of some sort? I don't know, that's what I'm curious about.
I, I understand, Counselor, what you're trying to ask me. I just want to make sure. I'm happy about it going to community resources, and we do know that it has to go to legislative matters. And my concern is that we do intensive research out there, public research. Of with the Chamber of Commerce, the, the Small Businesses Associations. And all the retail, retail shops like Big Y, all of them, just like Jesse and Paul Spector did. They did intensive hearings and research on it and reaching out, that's all I'm asking.
Oh, okay, I just want to, an historical fact. The hearings were no more or less than what we're proposing here on the plastic bag ban. I was council president at the time. And so. It's, it's worth noting that, that all those agencies and businesses have an opportunity to attend community resources and legislative matters. And the City Council discussion and debate. And also, as everyone can, in all these circumstances, can submit written testimony or can speak in person during the remote meetings. So if, if that's satisfactory to you. Then, then I hope that our referrals are adequate. And if you want to expand the referral, then I recommend that you propose something.
What I'm suggesting is, is having the total communication and transparency here. Because of the COVID nineteen and many, many businesses that are hurting. And you're looking at extra things being add-on to these businesses. That's all I'm asking, is that we do intensive research. By communicating and letting them know that there's going to be hearings, they have the opportunity to come and speak about it.
I, and, and what I would recommend, then you know, if, for people that you've heard from that are concerned, who haven't heard about it. Or like to participate, then I would, I would encourage you to encourage them to participate and offer their testimony at the, at the Community Resources Meeting. Where this will be hopefully referred to and to legislative matters, also where we'll have to be.
You're also gonna go ahead and reach out to them, correct? I mean, they're gonna know.
Counselor, I, I, we have re, I just want to be clear. That the Youth Commission actually worked very hard, has worked really hard. And in fact, actually, it's the same group that Counselors Spector and Counselor Adams use. In their research, and this is, and they have done the same thing here. There, and they have drafted a report based on their interviews. They've gone in person when they could, and then now subsequently since COVID, they were doing, they were doing phone calls and emails. So it's just, it's the, we're doing our due diligence, we have to, but just like everything. And, and having Amy Callahan speak is excellent, having the, the ED of the DNA is perfect. And she's the perfect spokesperson for, for many of the businesses that she represents. And I hope that they will come and give and share their testimony, express their concerns. And at the same time, also be willing to listen to and hear the advocacy. So I think, just, I, I think we're agreed, I think we're agreed that this will go to community resources, hopefully. And we'll, and we'll definitely have to go to legislative matters.
Okay, Counselor Nash.
Thank you.
Yeah, as the, the Chair of Community Resources, I welcome this discussion when we get it on the table. And that, based on Ms. Callahan's, you know, testimony earlier. That, yeah, I think there's a little more listening that we need to do. And, and a little more outreach with the business community around what, what's in, precisely is in the ordinance. And so there's more discussion and community resources and legislative matters are, are the places we can, we can do that.
Thank you, Counselor.
Other discussion? Other discussion on the referral to Community Resources and Legislative Matters? Seeing none. Oh, Counsel, Counselor Quinlan, in under the wire.
Just a question of, of how, just procedurally how that works. When Community Resources has completed their vetting of this ordinance, does it, how does it go to Legislative Matters? Does it come back to the full council for a re-referral? I just want to understand that procedure.
No, once it goes to Community Resources and they vote on, and they vote on their recommendation, then it will move to Legislative Matters.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please, Laura, on the referral to Community Resources and Legislative Matters.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett. I recused. And Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Okay, that is referred. Moving on to twenty point one one five, an ordinance relative to parking on Middle Street. Counselor Jarrett's back with us. Yes, is there a, so this is, the sponsor is parking, is Transportation and Parking. So just so you note, I don't think it needs to go there since they're sponsoring it. Am I correct?
Correct.
Move it to Legislative Matters, please.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to refer it to Legislative Matters. Any discussion on that referral? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
And Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Okay, that is referred. I know of no other business. Counselor Dwight?
It's a point of information relative to Legislative Matters for people anticipating the plastic reduction and sustainability ordinance being on the agenda. That is dependent on the final disposition coming out of Community Resources. I expect it's a possibility that this, given the amount of interest this has suddenly generated, that and the circumstances, I suspect it's possible that it would carry over over the course of at least two meetings in Community Resources. That's a possibility. So it may not appear on the next agenda Legislative Matters, dependent on the outcome in Community Resources. Just want folks to know. It will, when it does, when it is finally released from, with recommendations from Community Resources, then it will be a part of the agenda. It may still be part of the agenda, depending on how things go there, but I just want to put in that cautionary note, where people were, were intent on following this.
Thank you. And just to clarify, just to, a little tweak of a clarification, it, it's not dependent on what Community Resources decides on their recommendation. It's dependent on them completing that process, and if they decide it will move on, it just may take towards one year.
Completing, completing their, their recommendation process, yes. Thank you for making that distinction.
You're welcome. Okay, I believe I was looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
Motion's been made by Counselor Labarge, seconded by Counselor Nash, to adjourn. Roll call, please, on adjourning.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
I said yes, I'm sorry.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
And Counselor Nash.
Yes.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. See you in.
Thank you.